Good evening, Camby. Welcome to another fun-filled evening of the Camby City Council. Tonight, we are starting early because we have a work session this evening. We are going to review, further deeper dive into the system development charges, or STCs, and do some updating to some processes. And this is part three. It's almost like the, yeah, we just so much to break down. So I will turn it over to Don and his compatriots to download us on what's going on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is part three of our system development charge discussion. There will be one more work session in August, August 6th. Before I get started, I wanted to do some introductions. We have two people here from FCS group, Todd Chase and Tim Wood, who's sitting behind. Both have been helping us through this process of this SDC update. We also have Josh Soper, our attorney online. He's been also kept in the loop on the SDC update and is well seasoned in system development charge work. And Ryan Potter is in our audience as well. He's our planning manager. And he also has a lot of experience on the park side of things. Before I turn it over to Todd and Tim, I just wanted to kind of frame this up in context of some other work that we're doing as well. So we have a system development charge process update. Parallel to that process, we're doing a housing production strategy update as well. And there will be a council work session on that on July 16th, and a planning commission work session this coming Monday on June 9th. That will be getting into some of the parallel items dealing with strategies on housing production strategies, which are about trying to make things more affordable based on our housing needs analysis that we've adopted. We, so that's one element here. The other element is the parks acreage for the urban growth boundary expansion. There's a weave in, in part to the system development charge update. And as we get into that part, we'll talk a bit more about that. But there's an acreage component that would be likely fulfilled with the urban growth boundary expansion issue as well. So those are, those are two things that are kind of coming out of the system development charge update process. And just to touch briefly on a few of these items. So the housing production strategy piece of this, there's a methodology, and that's what FCS is putting together. The methodology pieces also relate to our housing production strategy, and those relate to scalable system development charges, as we've talked about for single-family homes. We're going to get into that a bit more. And then also, for multifamily homes, the same, at least aspiration we'd like to see is charging by square footage of unit for multifamily. And those could be in a range between up to 500 square feet, 500 to 1,000, and 1,000 plus, just for example. Those give, again, some opportunities to scale things and to create more affordability for those. And then also, on the implementation side of things, you're going to, there's a bit of discussion around discounting, discounts for, for deed restricted types of affordable housing, like Habitat for Humanity, and dealing with those kinds of things. We're not expecting a full-on discussion of this tonight, but that's going to be something you all will hear about on July 16th as well. So these are running in concert, and then using system development charge payment plans for affordable housing type of features. And we've done those for different projects. They've not necessarily been affordable housing types, but that's an opportunity as a discretion element for the city to be looking at those. All this kind of relates to two things, which is the housing needs analysis and what the needs are within the city, in particular for those individuals between 30 and 80% median family income. So I don't want to spend a lot of time diverting on that conversation, but just in context, we're also being asked to address those issues based on both the needs, or in the housing needs analysis, as well as the Department of Land Conservation and Development expectations around those items, and what other communities are also doing. And that's something that they have final say on in the end. So with that, I just wanted to kind of frame this a bit on the front end. So the system development charge piece does, in fact, relate to our housing strategies. And so I just wanted to kind of make sure that introduction was made, so that when we get to the discussion on July 16th, it's framed in that context. So I'm going to stop there, because I think I've said enough on that piece of it. And I'm going to turn it over to Todd to run through the slides.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice to be back. Made some progress, and we wanted to give you an update before we go too far down the road with the next steps. So at the last meeting, we did an overview, kind of a refresher, on what system development charges are. It's a one-time fee on new development that increases demand on the city's utilities. You have one chance to collect it. It's typically at the time of building permit issuance. It's not a tax. It's not a land use decision. It's a, it's a, it's a fee in lieu of actually requiring developers to build the improvements that are necessary to serve it for the community. So we're talking about collector and artiro roads, not local streets. We're talking about trunk lines and pump stations. We're talking about wastewater. We're talking about mostly neighborhood and regional parks, community parks, that type of thing. So there are, of course, other projects developers have to build, local streets to get to their developments and that type of thing, that aren't included in STCs. So we're really talking about the big-ticket items when we're talking about STCs. We have a number of options. We were fortunate, because we got to work with the city on the last few updates for transportation and parks, which has now been over 10 years ago, I believe. And so it's a good time to update that with our new growth forecasts that have been adopted as part of the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunities analysis. As the city considers expanding to accommodate that growth, you're going to have additional demand for transportation parks, wastewater, and stormwater facilities. You have a number of methodology options that cities can explore. It's always good to talk about these before we actually publish a draft methodology report, which we intend to do in August. And we intend to come back to in August, perhaps even before we publish the report, with some of our draft findings. So if there are alternatives that you'd like to see, we'd like to include those in that discussion in August. So tonight, we really want to talk about what types of options and alternatives you'd like to see evaluated before we spend a lot of time and effort on developing the methodology. At the last meeting, we talked about three primary options the cities typically consider when they update their STCs. The first one Don briefly mentioned was varying the costs or the STCs and charges based on the size of a home. You, you do vary them by type of housing unit currently, whether it's a apartment or a single-family home. It has a different transportation fee. But what we're talking about really is varying it by the size of floor area, finished floor area in the home. And this could apply to single-family detached housing, or attached housing, or even multifamily apartments, in which case you may want to vary the fee based on finished living area, not, not the common area, or the, you know, the shared weight room, or whatever amenity they have in the apartment unit. Some cities like to focus that, that variable just on the single-family units, not the multifamily units. And they prefer to just vary the fees based on home size for single-family homes, which typically include a detached house or one to two units per structure. And then when it comes to multifamily with three or more units per structure, they should typically, mostly vary them by the number of living units that are being added. So if you're adding 100 apartments, you would charge the fee for 100 units, not based on the square feet of each living area, which could range from 500 square feet to maybe even 1,200, 1,300 square feet. And the administrative time of calculating each living unit for a multifamily apartment could take a little bit more time, of course. To confirm those estimates provided by the developer would take more time. So cities have the option of varying the fees by home size for just focusing on single-family, or by including multifamily in that option. I know there appeared to be consensus support to pursue this. It is consistent with one of the housing production strategies that is going to be included in the housing production strategy recommendations. But we don't know whether we want to explore scaling it by multifamily unit, or just focus on the single-family unit. So we'd like to get some council input on that tonight. One or more districts. We had discussion about that at the last meeting. There seemed to be some mixed support for exploring multiple districts to currently have one citywide district. So no matter where you are in the city, if you're building in Camby, you're going to pay the same fee as you would anywhere else in the city. Some cities recognize that certain areas cost more to serve than other areas, and other areas cost less to serve, like downtowns, where all the infrastructure is pretty much here. And if somebody wants to do an infill project, you don't necessarily need to add a turn lane, or a park, or anything like that. So the cost of serving downtown development could be significantly less than serving something on the fringe. So there, you know, we can look at a downtown district, and we can also look at districts on kind of the urban fringe, if those areas are defined. Currently, we're just focused on inside the city limits. But we recognize that when you expand the UGB, you're going to have an opportunity to charge a subarea fee on those areas. And that's what Wilsonville does. That's what Hillsborough does. Tiger does this. King City's doing this now. It's common practice to have a subarea fee for urbanizing areas. So I'd like to get your input on that option. And then we'll talk about parks. Parks STCs have probably the potential for, for an increase based on the capital improvement program that we've seen, the draft program that we pulled together with the Park Committee input that we'll share with you tonight. We recognize that you currently charge non-residential. The park has to see as you do residential uses. And we might have a, recommend that we do a separate category for hotels. And the hotel fee would be calculated differently than the non-res fee. We can make special adjustments for hotels, because they tend to generate lodging bed taxes for the general fund, supplemental revenue that you don't get from businesses, or residential development. So we can have a special adjustment for hotels. And I think there's support for that as well. So we'll talk about these items tonight. On the discussion list, there's also the item related to deed restricted affordable housing, and potentially discounting STCs for certain types of deed restricted affordable housing, plus the use of STCs, providing payment options for multifamily housing. I think you've done that in the past. And so that can become an administrative procedure. It doesn't need to be part of the methodology. The methodology is intended to basically provide you with a maximum defensible charge that you can, as city adopt. And whether you choose to phase that in, in year one, which will be next year, or over time, which could take three years, is up to council, depending on what we, what we come up with. We're going to, we're going to establish the ceiling. And then all the procedures that go along that with that, escalating the fee annually, discounting it for certain types of uses, exempting certain types of uses, all those are procedures that can be done at any time. So those are the items. We're going to jump right into it. See. As I mentioned, the scaling, so the first discussion item is focused on scaling, the STCs by home size. And you have a number of options here. We tend to recommend, if you do this, to base it on the conditioned floor area of the house. I know you probably, building, probably doesn't track that currently with building permits, but it would have to be something you'd have to start tracking with a new permit. But what it does do is, if somebody wants to expand a home and add, say, 1,000 square feet to it, you now have the option of charging that home a fee. You currently don't have that option. So you could pick up some additional revenue that way. You can also establish a minimum threshold for, for, for charging this fee. Cities like Wilsonville, I believe, don't charge additions or ADUs under 600 square feet. So you could, you could have that option as well. And, and you have the option of setting a maximum charge as well. Empirical data suggests that as homes get larger, the number of occupants increases to a point, and then it starts to taper off. About 3,000, 3,500 square feet is when they taper off. And so it doesn't really make sense to continue to charge a fee for homes larger than 3,500 square feet, but you can do that. So those are pretty much the, the main items, plus the one I mentioned earlier. Shall we include multifamily in that square foot charge? Or does it make sense to charge that based on a unit, a living unit? And so, you know, I don't know whether you want to stop here and discuss this, or continue.
I guess it's, Council, how do you want it? Do you want to see the whole presentation? Or take, or piecemeal this as we go?
Just probably just piecemeal it, because by the time we get to the end, we'll, we'll have forgotten what the other thing was, and then we'll have to go review it all, and it takes more time. These are charges to, to build a new addition. So a couple of things in that, my little mind, my little small brain's going through at this time. If you, we have a minimum square foot fee, then wouldn't that just mean that I just have to put my addition on in two different sections, to avoid the SDC charge? I mean, that's what I would be thinking of. Say, let's do one for 500, another one for 500 square feet.
I think what, what I've seen other cities do is they'll, they'll have this kind of a, as, an exemption from additional charge. If that second addition is made, say after a period of two years, they'll be exempt from it. But if you do one and then another, you're not exempt from it. So I've seen.
I had to space it out. Two years. To do it, to cheat the system. So that was just one thing that I would. And then, of course, your apartment complexes, it's better to, instead of doing it by square footage, to do it by unit, you're saying, just because it's easier to calculate, or is it because, I mean?
I think it's going to end up resulting in a more equitable way of charging. And that's what systematically, I think, is probably not appropriate in our current system for, like, look at, you know, single families. Should an ADU be paying about the same as a 4,000 square foot home? That, that, that's, so basically, the current situation is, it's not scalable, and what are, and for single family, or for multifamily, I would argue. And by giving that scalability, you're allowing smaller units to have a lesser charge, which, which is, I think, appropriate.
Well, I just think if the multi-unit rate, if it's detached from square footage, then you could have some, potentially, there are places, not in Camby now, but maybe in the future, where you can have some fairly large units on a multifamily building. And so I'm wondering, with the wisdom of, of not taking square footage of the per unit into, into account. Now, obviously, we, we could have sort of a tiered way. So if it's, the unit is below certain square footage, and they'd be all the same all, all over the place. But I'm wondering, we might be painting ourselves in the corner by just saying that you could have some, I mean, and then there's a question of, are they building apartment units, or they're building condos, you know, that could be the same physical structure, but maybe different.
Yeah, they, they're pretty much, if it's a multifamily low-rise development, they're probably in the same category. But if it's an assisted living, it's going to be a different category. Now, as far as the square feet, my, my thinking is that the smaller the multifamily unit, the more likely the people are going to be in parks. They're going to be using the parks. So, you know, does it make sense to really charge them less of an impact of a SDC for a smaller unit, when at some point, they're going to be, they don't have a backyard, you know, they're going to be outside in the city parks. And so, you know, it seems that the actual system impact for multifamily based on unit size, there's less of a nexus than with single-family homes.
Yes.
It seems to me that in most apartment complexes, in most apartment complexes, et cetera, there might be a few larger ones and a few smaller ones, but the majority are usually probably within the, the same range, like, you know, like 80% is in a square footage, and then 10 and 10, maybe, like, on, on the outset. So it seems to me, I, to Council Stern's question, that maybe if you had something about, if there's a little more detail about what the multifamily dwelling is, because you could have two, to that 2,500 square foot duplexes, I mean, would that be different? Like, how would that work versus, you know, other units, like a larger apartment complex?
Right, right. Well, if it's, generally, if it's one to two units per structure, we'd put it in the single-family category. And if it's three plus, we'd probably put it in the multifamily. And you're right, most developers who build multifamily units are going to provide a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units to maximize absorption. But on average, they're going to be about 850 square feet, maybe less. But that's the average. And so, you know, you can spend a lot of time over analyzing it, but you're going to, you know, you want to make it easy. And you also, I don't, I think you don't want to penalize multifamily developers that want to build two bedroom units because there's a big demand for that in Canby.
Yes, sir.
The square footage of HVAC, so I assume if somebody has a garage and they want to put in cadet units in their garage, then that would be considered the part of the square footage?
Yeah, I mean, if that garage has a heater and air conditioner, it'd probably be included in the square footage. Mostly no. You know, rarely do we see garages and attics included in the square foot calculations. But, you know, it's possible somebody could convert it to an ADU and then we'd include it.
Yeah, I can see leaving that, but excluding garages because people, people tend to put in cadet units, heating units in the garages and stuff so that they can, you know, work on their cars and things like that. But by including that, that would mean that that square footage would count as well.
Yeah, we want to exclude it more than not.
Right.
Good point.
Don, have we already determined, so, under item one there, I guess the first arrow, so a charge based on single family home size, have we already determined yet what that price would be, or is that yet to be determined?
We, that's part of the work that we're doing. We're going to get into a bit of discussion tonight about parks, the parks piece of that, which will be going up. We know that's going to go up based on the 20-year, draft 20-year list. We don't have the final numbers, and I think that will be something that'll be important when we meet on August 6th, because I think we'll have more information about that. And so, to Todd's point about maximum defensible rate, we, the council has the decision to say, yeah, we'll go that direction, but most jurisdictions have not gone with a maximum defensible rate because it's usually a very, very large number. And so the council can make the decision to say, we're going to choose a lesser number. We know what the maximum defensible is, and we'll choose a lesser number for that. We don't have all the information. The transportation side of things, that list is forthcoming, just like the draft parks, parks SDC list, we've received that. The transportation list is forthcoming. We don't have that quite yet, but we will have that by August 6th, so you'll see that. So you'll see, the hope is that you'll see the whole thing and perspective about what the increases are going to be. I do believe they will be substantial because I think Canby is on the lower end of the range on just overall.
Yeah.
How substantial they are, and then we'll know how that is compared to the ones that are outliers, which are like Wilsonville and Hillsborough, which are really, really high combined. And I think that's, that's the tricky part of this whole thing, is trying to find a way to...
The front key's going down further than I expected.
Jason.
Quick question, just for, currently, if I want to build a house on my empty lot next door, how much does it cost me for SDC fees?
So you're looking at about $14,000, $14,000 to $15,000 total.
Okay, so all the new houses now on the current rate, you're down $14,000 to $15,000. And so, assuming we kept the same rates that we did now, if we did multi, if we did it based on square footage, some of the houses will be more and some of the houses will be less than $14,000.
They would be. And I think part of this is, I mean, it's going to be really difficult to create, you know, completely affordable housing, but to the extent twofold charge here, you know, what do we need to capture the cost for continued services for parks and roads and sewer and storm? At the same time, what are the ways that can we, in some ways, target this to make it less challenging financially for those most in need that are identified in the housing needs analysis as being, you know, where there's income restrictions on those? What can we do in that arena? It is difficult on these market rate elements to achieve that. And so maybe the focus is on where there may be, we haven't quite got there yet, but maybe on the targeted affordable housing where there might be, you know, at least a 10-year deed restriction, if not more, based on 30 to 80% income levels and structurally, what would that look like? And maybe, you know, maybe it's a 20-year, you know, deed restriction or longer. But like the Habitat example is a really good one because they actually have contracts and they have mortgages, and I'm pretty familiar with that. This is outside of my job, but that whole program that they do works quite well. And I think it's one that they have a really strong management structure to it. That one, I would really like to have some attention, you know, as to, that may be the kind of way to get to that, those income levels that better than maybe the market rate piece. I'm struggling a bit with the whole, like, the scalability for single family, I think, clearly should happen. I'm not sure about, you know, Todd's mentioning like the two-bedroom versus the, you know, like the individual studio. I don't know if we could show the metrics on that, maybe we could show that on August 6th, but like, which of those would provide to not penalize the two-bedroom units, but at the same time, like, have it most equitable? And so that's the charge that we have with housing needs analysis on our housing production strategy that you all will be seeing on the 16th of July. That's part of the dynamic. That was more of an answer than you wanted, but hopefully that helps.
Thank you, that is helpful. My one concern would be if we're doing affordable, non-affordable, the law sometimes doesn't recognize it, but affordability is on a continuum. And if you end up with a really low fee for certain houses and then it jumps up really high for the next level houses, what you'll get is an incentive to produce one set or the other, but not do anything in the middle. And so that would, I guess, be my concern with having, having, avoid having low income, too much low-income housing, because the reality is, low-income housing is, if there's no money there for the low-income housing, then there's no money there to maintain them.
And that would be a key element to any decision. I would recommend that the managerial structure is similar to like what Habitat has, because that is a critical factor. And talking to, you know, Ray at Canby Center, I've had some conversations with him about that, and what are those long-term managerial elements that go with that? And what are, what's the skin in the game? And what are those elements I think are critical to, and we can establish those. I think there's a way to get to that point, like, so you don't have, well, nobody's managing this, and then like the city ends up managing something that we never really were anticipating to take on to begin with. There are income level challenges, and they are in Canby, and it's those people, you know, are here already. And I think, you know, that's part of the challenge here is just making it as much as we can and affordable for everybody to live here. We know what those dynamics are based on the housing needs analysis. And to that extent, I think, one, that's our charge to try to do that and make that work. And, you know, it's something that the state really is pushing as well. But I also feel like it's something that we clearly need to address and to the extent that we can.
So, I don't think there's any questions, but just to...
Sorry, Jim.
I remember the way Habitat Humanity Works, I used to, for not necessarily, but other areas, I used to do the accounting for the Habitat for Humanity and, you know, how the shared equity works. For low-income housing, is there a option for sort of a deferred collection of SDC fees? In other words, you know, not needed all at once, but gradually?
Absolutely.
There are several years, so that's not a huge upfront penalty, but maybe spaced out so that the city still gets what they need, but not, you know, all at once?
And there, absolutely, yes. And that's part of this, you know, there have been some, the city's done this before. It's at our option, the Bancroft Act. And so essentially, this is like a 10-year payment plan at some interest rate that is established, usually it's prime, prime interest rate. And council could, in part of this process as well, and this may be as more the housing production strategy side of things, is choose that that rate may be paid over time and to choose a perhaps lesser rate than prime as well. It's another way to address that issue.
So, just, I think, kind of breaking this down, so, a charge based on single family home size, the square footage, so is that going to be a sliding scale or is that a, we're just going to, that's going to be broken down based on just law of averages and what's getting built in the city of Canby?
It can be either. We can come back with a sliding scale, and then we can decide as city that we want to have a small, medium, and large category.
Okay. Yeah, that might be of interest to, like, I think, to hear. Is that, what's that, what does that look like, a small, medium, large aspect? The max, because so right now, it's just, we're just doing a flat, flat fee on all of our SDCs, no matter the size of the home.
This is what you're doing right now.
Right.
14, 7, roughly.
And as you can see, you know, an accessory dwelling unit is paying pretty much the same as, you know, as what you would have because of comparative larger home. You know, it's a little bit less, but, I mean, you know, when you have an 800 square foot home and a 3,500 square foot home, should they be paying the same SDC is the question?
Well, and I think that's where inherently where I, like, as reading through this for tonight, like, three people in an 800 square foot home are going to have the same, feasibly, right, going to have the same impact on street, sewer, water, et cetera, as three people in a 3,500 square foot home. So I guess that's what I'm trying to wrap my mind around, you know, in terms of how we do that based on housing size. You know, obviously, we can't do that based on people, right? Like, great, how many people are going to move into this house? But...
And there, I mean, we haven't quite got to the slide. I mean, there's, and this might be a bit more complicated, but we talked briefly about fixtures and those kinds of things that you start to get into a different formula. You could make the argument, I hear what you're saying, you could make the argument, however, that the larger home also could accommodate, you know, a much larger group of people as well.
Sure.
And be partitioned down into like almost an apartment setting.
It could, yeah. Yeah, I mean...
You can sublet bedrooms. I mean, we don't really, that housing thing's evolving, you know, and we're not there yet, but that subletting apartments, bedrooms is something that other communities have done, so.
Yeah, I was just, again, like, does a house with three toilets have a different impact than a house with one? You know, like, I guess that's where, how to, I'm glad that you guys have that to figure out. We just have to, I guess, figure out the policy piece, and it still seems to me like we're doing our best, kind of our best guess on, you know, thumbnail sketching what we're looking at, so. Did you have something, Councilor Waterman? Oh, okay. Can we go back to the other slide there with the, I guess that's the first one we were trying to decide on? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a maximum charge, because again, I don't, as our lot sizes have gotten smaller in Canby, I'm not, I mean, you and Ryan see it more than I do or we do in terms of this, you know, how many 3,500 square foot homes are we, are we building right now? Same thing with the ADUs. I don't, and since I've been on the council and we provided that as an option, I can only think there's maybe only been a handful of ADUs in the 10 years that I've...
It is a small number, you're correct.
Because the SDCs were prohibitive, like, we are charging them full SDCs.
Like, super expensive, and, yeah, I think that's a big part of it, and you'd be surprised at what this home size is, people try to put on a small lot. I mean, it's probably not always 3,500, but people try to maximize every square foot of the lot, yeah.
No, absolutely, I mean, yeah, we've, like, we were talking at the budget committee meeting on some of those things, so they'll take advantage of the full, as close as they can to the edges of the property and all that, so going up, not out. And so what does that look like? In the last piece there, the multifamily rate based on dwelling units? I don't, I, to me, it seems like it should be on dwelling units.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I still think there should be some sort of maximum dwelling unit size to, you know, it may be hard to believe, but I do taxes for people with rented out dwelling units that are 1,500 square feet in a high-rise, you know, condominium thing. So it's not, for me, it's not out of the realm of possibility, but the, even bigger 2,000 square foot, you know, dwelling units. So I think, I think if we didn't put a limit on dwelling units later on, we might have to.
We could have two categories for that. You know, units under 1,500, units over 1,500. And as you pointed out earlier, we'll get a lot of 1499s.
Any other, I mean, do we have, I think we've got one checked off, I think, on these...
The next one really is a procedure. You know, defining affordable housing as deed restricted under 80% of the area median income is what would potentially qualify 10-year, you know, deed restriction at minimum. Some communities cap the number of units they will permit to have this exemption or discount per year. I think Sherwood, Sherwood and Newbury, they limit it to like, you know, 20 maximum per year. You got to be in the door January 1st with 20 applications. That's all you get, you know? The rest of them aren't going to get the discount. Some don't have that cap, and they just have the discount, and the discount can be 50% or it can be 80% of what you typically would charge. And as is pointed out earlier, you could, you could, you could also finance or allow the developer to finance this and pay you back over a period of 10 years as a city. You don't necessarily want to be a bank as a city, but for big projects, you know, Hillsborough does that for large multifamily developments. Because that's a lot of money. You're building 100 units, you know, you're paying $200,000, well, in their case, probably $500,000 in fees.
So, just for my understanding, deed restricted, define that for me.
So it's going to be something where we're going to need to define, that's really something we can define with you all. I mean, this could be a time period, it could be 10 to 20 years, and that would get back to the point, I think, to some degree, what Todd's talking about, which would probably limit it by itself. Again, not trying to just narrow this down to one type of activity where you might just have Habitat, but you've got a faith-based organization. We don't really see that here, but in Portland, the Catholic Church, they've actually built housing on their properties. And that's another organization that is really focused on the managerial side. The church is managing that. There, that's kind of how it works there. And so I think it could be, you know, a 10 to 20-year period at the discretion of the council. And I think that would be, the piece that would go with that would be some sort of contract that they would end up signing with us, or some development agreement that they would end up signing with the city. And that would be reported against the land.
So what is the restriction on the deed, though? If I build this thing, what am I restricted from doing?
You're restricted from making it not, you're from not creating a market, free-market based situation. You're restricting it to 80% median family income or...
For my tenants, right?
What's that?
80% for my tenants that I have...
Yeah, 30 to 80%. And so that you're coveting that you're going to actually keep those tenants there, and you're not going to be in 10 years, you know, whatever the period of time, for a period of time, you're not going to remove that. So the affordability there is guaranteed, they're contractually guaranteeing that affordability for a period of time.
Yeah, those, I mean, those are, I think that's good in theory, but what it means in practice, at least what I have personally seen, is that those who are lower income that want to get up to regular income have to be kicked out of their residence when they no longer qualify, which creates a lot of instability. It's sort of weird going over somebody's tax return, what they're saying, can I get a little bit lower, otherwise I think I'm going to lose my housing. Otherwise, I think I'm going to lose my housing, and that's, I think, I know, I know it's kind of a common thing, but I think that some people don't see the negative impacts on family stability and, and where are you, where are you going to stay? And then you end up getting a lot of people, in essence, trying to cheat on their income just to make sure that they don't get, lose, lose a place, their place of living. And so I don't know if there's a way, as a public policy matter, of, of, of defining that, so you're not in that situation of forcing turnover in your, in your, uh, in your, uh, you know, on your tenants. And so it's just something that people don't see unless they're actually in the business, like I am, of measuring people's income, of what the damage that can do.
I, and I think that, to your point, I mean, there could even be a caveat that there is a mortgage involved. I mean, to, to, I mean, again, not to template this, but that, that's how.
I'm just saying that that kind of policy needs to be fairly well crafted to, to keep from some of those negative side effects.
I hear you, you don't want to throw people out after a certain tenure of time, and I, I, again, I think it's trying to establish, again, uh, long-term residency that's secure, um, that's, I mean, Habitat does that, I mean, that's.
Oh, we know Habitat does that.
People end up owning their homes there, so, again, not to go back to that as being the only template, but I think that would be a good example.
I'm talking about sort of for multi, multifamily dwellings, I know what Habitat does.
No, I, I get it, I mean, it can be as narrow as we want to make it, I mean, really, it's, it's a matter of just trying to provide that potential.
It's usually, also usually on a case-by-case basis, council decision, each, each case is unique. So, you know, when you get government-supported housing with some kind of public subsidy, you know, you have the option of, of reducing the fee by a percentage. And we could say, you know, but this is a procedure, it's not in the methodology per se, but something we probably can, can come back to.
Yeah, we, looking at the, watching the clock here, and we're obviously in a very heady, uh, conversation here, and so I want to make sure we give you all what, what it is that you need. Are there additional slides? I know there are additional slides to run through. Yeah, I'm not sure, Don, how we want to, because I don't know if we're going to give you all the, yeah.
I, I think what I would suggest, um, I think we probably have received, I think you've given us good input on coming back on these items. I would like to get to the parks piece, Todd, if we can, I know that's a pretty heavy conversation, but I'd like to get to that.
Okay, we'll see, we'll, we'll do what we can.
So, uh, with regard to parks, um, working with your staff, um, we've, we've come up with an existing level of service based on your current acreage of developed and undeveloped parks and trails inside the city limits and also outside the city limits. And, um, we've worked with the Parks Committee to come up with a project list that includes proposed projects inside the city and, or, and inside the UGB and outside the UGB. And when I say outside the UGB, I mean outside the future UGB, which we haven't even defined yet. So they've, they've identified about twenty-one point four acres of parkland outside the future UGB that could become a city park. And so we're going to have some discussion about this later, um, with respect to the whole project list, because before you adopt an SDC methodology, you also have to adopt a project list. And that typically can be done the same night, in one hearing, opens, adopt, close, next hearing opens, adopt, close. Or it can be done, you know, a month in advance. But you haven't even seen that project list yet. And, or, we don't have it in front of you tonight, the whole list, but we've summarized it and show you kind of what it, what it comes up to in terms of cost and acreage. But this is what you have currently. Actually, the current, this shows the existing parkland and acres and miles of trails, top, top table, and then that's inside the UGB and outside the UGB. You have two hundred and twenty-four acres outside the UGB that the city has. You don't necessarily, it's not active, it's not developed, but it's natural areas and open space. In terms of level of service, you have five point eight acres roughly of acres per thousand people inside the city, and eleven point five acres outside the UGB per thousand people, which is pretty unique. In the future, the, if, if you add all the acreage that the Parks Committee has recommended and you build this in the project list, you would have two hundred seventy-four point six acres in the future, twenty years from now, uh, in the UGB. And another, and the outside UGB number wouldn't change much, go up by twenty acres or so. And then, um, in terms of the levels of service, inside the UGB would go up to about ten point eight, which is pretty close to your policy of ten, and then outside, this nine point seven goes down a bit. So the actual project list, um, the acreage amounts include sixty acres of parkland for a regional sports complex slash aquatic center. So that's sixty acres is a big ticket item, you can see that ninety-five million dollars there. And, but the land associated with that is included in the land acquisition number, the forty-two point six million number. So we've, we've kind of dissected that project list here, and you can see it adds up to a hundred and seventy-nine point nine million total. And if you just include the UGB projects that are inside the future UGB, it's a hundred and sixty-six point two million. And if you just include the projects and, um, include the land, but don't include the complex for the aquatic center, it adds up to about eighty-five million. So we started to look at different scenarios, and if we divide those scenarios by the level of development that we're expecting over twenty years, about twenty-three hundred homes and ERUs, the actual fee per, per scenario would range from thirteen thousand three hundred on the low end to twenty-two thousand eight hundred on the high end, per home. And you still have an unfunded gap of about fifty-four point three million on the low end to a hundred and twenty-seven million on the high end. So that's a lot to take in, but you can start to see, we can, we can bring back these method, these alternatives to the draft report and talk more about it in August. I wanted to get some feedback tonight.
And just one add, um, part of the discussion will be about the school district and school district property, and this would be adjusted if there was a coordinated effort on that, whether that's in our local agreement or acquisition, those are conversations that have not yet happened.
And just for comparison purposes, we looked around the region, the highest probably in the state is Lake Oswego, had about seventeen thousand one hundred for their parks SDC. Wilsonville's about fourteen thousand, Oregon City's about eight.
And these are per single-family home, yeah. That's just the parks part, though, not any of their, the other SDCs.
So you could go with a methodology that takes you up to twenty-three thousand maximum defensible, but then we just phase it in over five years, or whatever you want to do.
I know we're short on time, I mean, we will bring all this back to you all, if there are other comments just, that you have, just briefly, we are happy to take those.
Yes.
Don, um, how does this affect commercial? Commercial growth? Are they charged the?
Yeah, the, the, the commercial industrial are also charged a parks fee, so they are, that's the current system right now, and that would be a question for the council as well, do we continue with that? There's no one that's not charged a parks fee, that everyone, every development's charged a parks fee.
Okay.
So does this include any commercial, or is this assuming that there is?
This is just to give you a yardstick of what it looks like for a single-family home, and we, we will come back with the detail on, like, the metrics on commercial. We're trying to just give a sense of, like, right now, in order of magnitude for this fairly robust list, what this means just individually for the parks increase, because the current home is about sixty-nine hundred dollars per home for parks system development charges, to give you an index, and so, um, that fee would largely be, needed to be going up at least probably double, if not more, to account for the twenty-year, the twenty-year list.
It does include non-residential to some degree, but we haven't, we haven't done the detailed math yet to know exactly what it will be when we include four hundred acres of, of industrial land, or whatever the number was.
So just to, as a reminder, my understanding, or correction if I understand is wrong, the SDCs can only be used for, like, new park development, creating the new parks, correct?
It, it can be used to, for capital improvements that last longer than five years on existing parks, if you're going to extend the life of those facilities. And, um, we can at least include what's called a growth share of that investment, which tends to be thirty percent roughly of the total cost for improvements to existing parks.
Okay, but, but they're not able to use for maintaining the parks?
Correct.
So we could get in a situation of lots of big, beautiful parks with no maintenance on them, if we, so there's, there's a, I guess, operating general fund sort of restriction on how many parks we can develop.
Theoretically.
I mean, if you're looking at, you know, two hundred and twenty-one acres that are not developed, then obviously there's something that's been keeping us from developing them all.
Some, some of those are natural areas that are not necessarily intended to be highly developed, but to your point, it does start to shape, like, what is the targeted area for the future in terms of what the focus should be, and this could be something, the system development charge will not pay for everything, you're correct. Some of these are fairly heavy lifts and they would require bonding, so that, that's part of that discussion as well. And this starts to lead to the urban growth boundary discussion in a way as to where these parks might theoretically be placed in the urban growth boundary expansion area. I think we're at time here, but yeah, thank you, and we'll be back on August sixth. If there are other comments and thoughts that you all have, we'd be happy to take those as part of that consideration. We will be meeting with Parks, Parks and Rec Advisory Board on June seventeen as well to further discuss this twenty-year list and next steps in the discussion with the school district.
Great. Thanks, Don, appreciate it, yeah. All right, Canby Concludes our work session this evening, so we'll adjourn that. Council doing?
Two minutes.
Okay. We'll take a three-minute break. I'll be generous to it. Good evening, Kami. Welcome to the June 4, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. If you please stand for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. I do have Mr. Perman, where are you, sir? You have requested to speak. Do you want to wait until your topic later on? Thank you. If you are attending in person, please fill out a yellow card. I've got several up here this evening, but if you do wish to address the council, please fill them out and give them to our lovely recorder here this evening, who's stepping in, so thank you. If you are not able to make it, but you want to address the city council and you want to zoom in, please make sure that you contact City Hall by 4:30 on the days of our city council meetings. Each person has three minutes. You are allowed to sell your time or trade your time to another person. And so when I call your card, if you're selling your time, please state that you are. First, I have Barry Johnson, who wants to address on the parks maintenance fee.
Mr. Mayor, council administrator. I'm here to talk about our parks maintenance fee that was set aside back in 2018. I've been parks chair since 2020, and since that time, I've been asking for a breakdown of exactly what is being spent out of our parks maintenance fee. I'd like a breakdown, if it's, you know, when this came out, it's ordinance 1466. I know all the, you know, the definitions and everything that goes associated with that ordinance. Rick Robinson, when he was here as city administrator on August 8, 2017, under his summary of, you know, what is to go into that, or what we were looking at, we were looking at collecting that money for maintaining, upgrading, doing things at our parks, as well as they wrote in for employees. And Jeff Schneider, at the time, wrote in, the fee would generate approximately $285,000 annually, which equates to three positions, okay? And I think everybody's always thought that this went along with the parks maintenance fee, three positions. I don't, I kind of, I think that was as long as we had deferred maintenance. Now, the deferred maintenance, this is after seven years, that deferred maintenance should be done. My belief is these parks maintenance people should be paid for out of the general fund. And that money should be set aside for upgrading, as I said, and making modifications to the various parks and upkeep. And to answer, I guess, Daniel, to one of the questions you had to Don Hardy, where's the maintenance of those parks going to come from if we build new parks? That's what the parks maintenance fee was intended for, okay? It would go towards maintaining those parks. The turf fields that we put over at Maple Street Park, I remember Jason, Councilor Patton saying, how are we going to upgrade or how are we going to maintain those parks, that turf field? That's what that parks maintenance fee was set aside to do. It would help to maintain those parks and make adjustments. I'm looking at, and I need to, I'm not as prepared as I should be, and I know I only got like 18 seconds, but we project to spend, in an email I received from our city administrator, $693,000 in personnel costs. That's the entire Parks Department. That's not the three people, okay? I'm looking for names. Who are those people? And what are these materials and services that we're paying for? What are those? Give us a list, so... And it was said that it's not capable, the system that you have to sell, is not capable of added allocating maintenance fee and revenue coming in, or whatever. I think that will be addressed maybe a little bit later on by some of the other folks here. Sorry, I mean, I'm not as eloquent as most.
No.
Thanks, Barry.
Barry, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Patton?
Is there other people to speak on this particular topic? Because I have a question.
No, I don't believe there are any additional on parks piece, no.
May I be permitted to ask a question about this?
You are granted permission.
Okay, so I have been tracking this now for some time with members of the parks folks coming in. And from what I understand, there was like some email that was drafted years ago that said, a certain percentage of the parks maintenance fee goes to three different items, construction, maintenance, and something else. And that email essentially became the policy. From what I understand, I don't think council actually ratified that email as a policy. It was sort of an internal thing. So in my opinion, and what I would be curious to know, is if the recommendation from the park maintenance, or the park board, is to have less of that fee go towards staff and more of it go towards other things, that we create a policy that ratifies that so that folks know that that's what the plan is. Rather than continuing to have them come in and ask this question, it seems to me like this is somewhat of a no-brainer, and we can do this through a resolution, similar to how the street maintenance fee is done. So that's just something I'll throw out there to have looked into, because I, from what I can tell, based on what research I've done, it seems like that would be the fix.
Okay, please, Councilor Patton?
Can I have a minute or so, I want to sit back.
Councilor Davis, and just a second, Barry.
Thank you, Mayor. I've requested just that, Jason, in regards to that we make that a council policy, not an email, because I've seen that email, and it's not adequate. The council sets policy on this, and I've requested a work session on this now for two weeks and haven't been successful getting that set through the city administrator yet.
And the only thing I wanted to say is, being a citizen at Kami and a board volunteer, I'm not able to set policy. So wherever this 40-40-20 came from, it didn't come from me. I mean, I can't set that, so I don't know where that came from, or, you know, who put it in place. And I think what, you know, we've talked about, maybe we need to sit down as our board and do a recommendation to change the ordinance so that it is trackable, as is the street maintenance fee. And we might need to rework it, tweak it a little bit.
Yeah, I concur with Councilor Davis.
Definitely, we don't want our personnel to be paid for out of the parks maintenance fee. There's bigger and better things than that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say yes to that.
We need a work session, yes.
Message heard.
Four of us safe, yeah. I think it's consensus. Yep, I'm nodding, we all want it, okay.
I also, my understanding is, before I get to the cards here, that there are, some people have signed up online. Lisa Bertram with OLCC?
I'm speaking on her behalf.
She's online.
Thank you.
So you're speaking on her behalf?
Right.
Okay. And then Holly Huber?
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'd like to follow Samra of OLCC. I'm not sure that I will have any comments, so I'd love for her to go, and then I can chime in if need be.
Okay. All right, well, then, hold on, Lisa, we will get to you in a second, okay? Thanks, or a couple minutes. Before I move on to the cards, I do have another, I have an email that's been sent in, that's been asked to be read into the record. It's from Keith Galitz, and it is as follows. I was at a city council meeting a few weeks ago, when I heard a presentation by Greg Perez outlining major issues at the city, including a $3 million surprise budget deficit. I also heard the presentation by a city finance employee along with her union representative. The things raised in these presentations were of great concern to me. It seems that we have a major leadership failure either at the city council level for not taking corrective action, or continued failures by the city administrator. The personnel issues raised at that meeting should very much concern the council and what appears to be ongoing dis, sorry, ongoing dysfunction within the administrator staff and among the city employee body. Whatever, if things continue as they are and have been, I believe the city is in major trouble. Citizens are going to demand change if change is not taken by the council. I urge the council and mayor to take immediate corrective action and bring about change in the city leadership. So, Mr. Galitz, if you are at home watching, thank you for the email. There has been action that has been taken regarding the employees, the employee that came and their union representation that came, that was, that has been addressed by the council, and that has been addressed as well by city staff in accordance with policies and procedures, as well as things, again, those are things that occur in executive session that I can't address further, but that there has been those conversations. Okay? All right. Ms., sorry, Sandra?
Samra.
Samra, excuse me. Why don't you come on up and...
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Samra Agar. I'm with the Coming Group. I am here tonight representing our client, which is the state of Oregon's agency, the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission. We are here because it's been brought to our attention that our project, which has commenced at 165 South Walnut, will not receive permanent power. And our project was approved in December, December 9 of 2024, for land use, with final approval executing on January 13. During this process, it was not mentioned or included in staff reports that there could be an issue with us obtaining a will serve letter for power from the local utility, Candy Utility. When land use was approved, we immediately submitted for construction permitting, and that has subsequently been issued by the jurisdiction, and we commenced construction in March of this year, 2025, mid-March. Tonight, we're here, Mr. Mayor and council members, we're asking for your help for this new business to the Kami community in supporting our effort to get permanent power. I just want to quickly kind of tell you, because some of you may or may not know what's happening, but there was a request by Kami PUD for additional power, feasibility study was issued. Kami PUD asked for seven and a half megawatts, of which OLCC needs 2.1. There are other projects attached to that, including Clackamas County Fairgrounds and another very large project by Tram Pro. But the feasibility study, which came out on April 14, we received an email at that time, actually on the 23rd, telling us that there was a transmission problem and that we would not be able to get permanent power for our facility. We have temp power for construction, but we will not be given permanent power. I brought a copy of that feasibility study, just in case the council members and the mayor need a copy. At that point, we went to the May 13 Kami Utility Board meeting. We expressed our concern over this and tried to ascertain what their plan was to help us achieve permanent power. And we witnessed the board actually approving the cost for an impact study to be done. We want you to know that impact study can take 90 to 120 days. That was initiated on May 14. The problem for us is that we need power by April 10 of 2026. And even when this impact study comes back, it is not known or if we will actually be able to get power without... or if we will actually be able to get power without, without, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
Without actual, like, you have to, substations, additional substations would have to be, be made. And that's really the critical piece for us. If we can't get permanent power installed before we finish the project, then Oregon's third largest generated revenue generator will be sitting on 347,000 square feet of warehouse distribution space for the liquor portion of this, not cannabis, just liquor. And that, for the 25 to 27 biennium, that will generate $525 million for this, the state, of which those are distributed amongst the general fund cities like yourselves, like Canby, and counties like Clackamas. And we're just really asking for your support on anything that you can do to help us. We know that Canby PUD is fully aware of this, this situation, but we need support to, to shorten this timeframe. We're already in construction, unlike everybody else who's attached to the same feasibility study.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, so, yes, the city is aware of the situation and we have been working with Canby Utility already on the issue. Myself and Chair, the Chair for Canby Utility have been in conversation and we are currently working together on lobbying our legislature to get this looked into. My understanding is that it's a lack of the size of the transmission lines. It's not necessarily a substation, but it's the, the ability to get the power from Bonneville over the PGE lines to get that to here. And it's, it's a, PGE, by the sounds of it, did not hold up their end of the deal. And that's why we're, myself and the Canby Utility Chair are working with the state legislature to, to apply pressure. Because that's not on Canby Utility, that's on PGE, but that, that's beside the point. We got to get that figured out for these three projects and beyond. So yes, we are aware of it, we are working on it as we speak.
Because we don't have a direct connection to them. The only people we can go to and lobby to as a client is just a Canby PUD.
Right.
We cannot go, PGE is not part of our equation, I guess, is what I'm saying. So if, without that support from you, and I'm glad you understand that it is a transmission
Yes.
situation, but it is critical path. And I would think as a city of Canby, you would be, this feasibility study does not bode well for growth in your community.
It does not.
That it's our hope that you will join forces with us and help us get this done.
Yeah, my conversation with Canby Utility has been that it's not, it's, it's a business stunter. Not necessarily a housing, it won't stunt housing. But our bread and butter and the things that we want to do as a city are depend on OLCC, Tramal Crowe, and Stanton Furniture, all the other businesses that are there, and continue to grow that. So no, this is a huge issue and I've attempted contact with PGE higher-ups as well. And so we are working on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you leave that with the recorder so she could send it to us for your email? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Holly, did you have, or Ms. Huber, did you have anything to add?
All I'll add is, you know, Tramal Crowe has been around Canby. We were the developers of Columbia Distributing. We are hoping to move forward on our near 800,000 square foot facility. We have capital all lined up and ready to go and we have had capital for the last six to nine months and, and the only thing we're waiting on is to get going is, is that will serve. So we're anxious to, to get going on construction and it's just been, we've just been held up. So we're hoping to keep our capital partners just on the line, waiting, but we, we need to see some, some light at the end of the tunnel to keep them, to keep them there so we can build the facility and bring jobs to Canby and bring, you know, property talks to, to Canby as well. So I'm excited to hear that you guys are aware of the issue and are working with Canby Utility and?
Okay. Thank you, appreciate you guys being here, thank you very much. Continuing with the cards, I have Teresa Sassy, you're selling your time to Greg Perez.
I'm going to wait until after I speak and I'll take that time then.
Which is?
Which is now.
Oh, you called me, I'm just.
Yes, sir, that's what I'm doing.
Here's your six.
Fair with you. Yes.
Yeah, no, I know.
Six minutes.
Yeah, we're moving on to the other cards here, so the time, you have six minutes, sir.
Okay, my name is Greg Perez. I live at 121 Northwest 12th Avenue here in Canby. Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and the city administrators. I gathered a bunch of signatures from a bunch of people to see if we were on the same page. They're residents of Canby, Oregon, in Clackamas County. We drafted up a letter to express our unified dissatisfaction with the leadership and city administrator Eileen Stein. This letter represents a formal expression of our collective of no confidence, a vote of no confidence in Ms. Eileen Stein's capacity to effectively administer our city. We are cognizant of the implications of this decision and arrived at, as it following careful consideration. Our city formally benefited from leaders who provided a clear vision and ensured citizens receive the requisite respect and support to meet the collective objectives. Unfortunately, Ms. Stein's tenure has been marked by concerns surrounding trust, collaboration, decision-making, and vision, as well as her demeanor towards citizens and staff. We maintain Ms. Eileen Stein has failed to uphold the principles enshrined in the Canby's mission statement, which pledges to protect and serve the community with honor, integrity, and professionalism. It has come to our attention that there are serious ongoing concerns regarding the actions, decisions, and leadership of a city administrator that has raised doubts about her ability to effectively serve the best interests of our community and the city of Canby. It is a responsibility of Mayor Hudson and the city council to ensure that the city administrator's performance aligns with the transparency, accountability, and that their actions are responsive to the needs and concerns of all residents and the employees of the city. We are the citizens formally request, we the citizens formally request and consider a vote of no confidence in the city administrator Eileen Stein in accordance with the city's charter, ordinances, and applicable laws. We respectively urge the city council to conduct a comprehensive review of the city administrator's performance, conduct, and actions to substantiate our request for a vote of no confidence, which is highly warranted. And I'll continue on with, our city mayor, Hudson, our city councilmen have been voted in to their positions to stand up for the citizens of Canby, the public employees of Canby, and they have not lived up to raising their hand to do this. It's a shame that we have a mayor that has no leadership. He's lost it, he can't direct the traffic into controlling what's going on here right now. It is ugly. The Canby community needs to know what is going on. They need to know that the mayor is not functional in his capacity any longer. I think he's just riding the time to think he's going to get a, you know, a parade when he's done. That's not going to be so, because we're going in levels on what we're doing here. We're just taking a stage at a time. And so if you're not doing your job and you can't make tough decisions, it's time for you to move on, because you're not effective anymore. You have to be effective. If you can't make decisions as a leader, you're not a leader. And if you're a leader and you're making decisions like going on right now, everybody knows that Public Works is under investigation, that's not a secret. And that's coming from the office here in the city administration. Somebody's got to take control and make decisions. It's the mayor, Mayor Hudson, your responsibility and the councilors to make that tough decision. And if you're going to let us continue to go on and fester and get worse, we're the laughing stock of Willamette Valley. And if you don't know that, let me tell you the people that do and they'll, they'll email you. You didn't do your homework and see where we're at right now in a terrible place. Non-decision-making has no vision and it falls into somebody's pockets. And the mayor is the one that's supposed to be leading this group right here and is not. You don't collaborate good as a council. You know the issues that are going on, but you're just letting it slide and let it happen? Why? Cut your ties and move forward. We were good until this all took place, until you made a mistake and now we, as the citizens of Canby, are paying for it. So the citizens of Canby will know, when it comes time, I'm sure the mayor will not run again and some of the others may not run again, but they may not even get voted in because they let us fester and continue on for over two years with nothing being done. They're just like, it's another day in the park. The Cassell thing, the Cassell thing, I called them up. The reports that you wanted to get for your program here in the city, it can be done. They can print out any, you can print out anything you want. I talked to the network technician and it can be done. We were misled that these disbursements and where the money's going, you can get that information from that program. But our financial director, I guess, didn't know how to do it. But I was having coffee on Friday and made the call and it was very simple. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next card I have is Kristi Smith, Pride Month.
Hello, my name is Kristi, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm here on behalf of Canby Pride. I wanted to start out with a couple of thoughts, though. We wanted to acknowledge and thank Mayor Hudson for issuing a proclamation recognizing Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day. Honoring the experiences and history of marginalized communities is a vital part of creating an inclusive and compassionate city. But that respectfully leaves me with a question. Why are some communities worthy of recognition while others are told neutrality is the fairest option? The queer community in Canby has been told repeatedly that proclamations acknowledging our existence, struggles, and resilience are too political. And yet, when proclamations are made for other communities, my question is, do the, does the reasoning shift? We are only asking for that same visibility, respect, and acknowledgement. I'm going to shift now to our statement. So for those that don't know, June is Pride Month and that is celebrated globally. Pride Month is not just a celebration, though. It's a reminder that queer and trans people are under attack still. From banned books and revoked healthcare rights to rising hate speech and violence, LGBTQ plus folks are being politicized, erased, and endangered every day, even here in Canby. But we're still here. We're raising families, teaching in classrooms, serving our communities, and creating spaces of care and joy. We're not new, we're not going anywhere, and we will not be quiet. This Pride Month, we invite our city leaders and neighbors to move beyond passive tolerance towards active solidarity. Because recognition matters, visibility matters, and leadership should not hide behind neutrality when injustice demands a response. To the LGBTQ plus community in Canby and beyond, this month is for you. We see you, we see your courage, we honor your joy, and we stand with you in pride and protest. For those that aren't aware, Pride at Wade Park will be held this year. It's our fifth year, June 22nd, from 12 to 4. And we would welcome anyone from the council to attend, not for optics or photo ops, but as an opportunity to learn, listen, and show genuine support for a community that has historically been underserved and under-acknowledged by local leadership. Your present would be, your presence would be an actual signal of commitment to growth, inclusion, excuse me, inclusion, and shared work, building Canby to a place where all residents feel seen, safe, and valued. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Next, I have Kristi Perez, also regarding the city administrator.
My name is Kristi Perez. I live at 121 Northwest 12th in Canby, Oregon. I'm here as a citizen of Canby, speaking directly to the issue of the petition of recall for the city administrator Eileen Stein, who has been a source of constant upheaval, divisiveness, and vindictiveness. On March 21st, the city's HR director resigned. Ms. Stein, the city administrator, appointed herself acting director of HR, which means that employees, if they have a workplace complaint, have only one person to complain to and that is their boss, who is in fact the very person they are having a problem with. The former deputy city recorder, with a spotless corporate work history, was placed on a personal improvement plan after only 90 days of employment, a job for which he received absolutely no job training. The PIP was for a duration of 45 days, during which his supervisor was mostly working remotely. In fact, she was in the office 25 days of his 45-day plan. At the end of those 45 days, without any meeting to review his performance, without any conversation, he was terminated in an email. Former employee Ruth Reyes. That little gal summed up every bit of courage she had and she made a complaint to the city council about the city finance director and she was terminated the very next day. She had no one to turn to because there was no one serving the interests of the employees. There have been multiple grievances filed against Elaine Stein and Scott Schlack, finance director, and where do the grievances go? They go back to Eileen Stein, the person whom the complaint is about. There were two more grievances filed for wrongful termination and again, where did they go? Back to Eileen, the person who did the firing. When city employees sought help from their union, Ms. Stein opened an investigation into the entire city works department, a move that was clearly retaliatory. Your city works department, the whole entire department, is currently on notice that their jobs, their livelihood is on the line. However, if any of them has a question as to what they did wrong, why are they being investigated? The only person, the only person they have to speak to about this is, you guessed it, Ms. Stein. All of you, all of you city councilors, Mr. Hudson, I am so grateful for all of the time that you put in here, the energy that you put in into an unpaid position. But I am begging you, think about the people who work for this city. Think about the employees. They're going home every single night with a knot in their stomach. Every night, they're wondering, will I have a job tomorrow? Because anyone who dares to question Ms. Stein or anyone in that inner circle has a target on their back. Stop this, stop this madness. If you're not willing to terminate the person who is at the root of this problem, give her an opportunity to resign, walk away safe face. But please, let the workers who are holding this city together, let them get back to doing the job they love without constant fear of repital. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Next card, Katie Joyner. Testimony on the finance director. Evening, Katie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Katie Joyner. I work here at the city of Canby in the finance department and I am the financial analyst.
Katie, sorry, will you move the microphone closer to you?
Yes.
Thank you.
I am here tonight to speak on behalf of our finance team consisting of Brenda, Paula, Gillian, Natalia, as well as myself, and I am here to set the record straight. On May 7th, a former employee came in front of this council and spoke poorly about the finance director, Scott Schlack. This employee essentially complained about the performance improvement plan that was implemented as well as how as well as having to come into the office every day to work. This same employee worked with the union to file nine grievances against the finance director. After a thorough investigation by a third party and $22,000 spent for that investigation, the investigator found that the evidence provided by the former employee did not support the allegations, made and determined the allegations as unsubstantiated. The former finance employee received a report showing those results of the investigation in March of this year. Yet she proceeded to come in front of this council and the public and smear his name with lies. Scott Schlack is a finance professional and holds a CPA license. His experience as an auditor for the government sector is a huge benefit to the city. His knowledge and experience has been shared with this finance team, and we are grateful for Scott's dedication to his profession, to his team, and to the city. Scott came to the city when we were in need of a new finance director. His goofy personality, dad jokes, and movie quotes lighten the mood at work. Scott came aboard in January of '24 when we were working on the audit, as well as starting on the '24-'25 budget. Actually, yes. Needless to say, that is a lot to take on, but Scott wasn't scared and was up to the challenge. Not only did Scott get us through a city and transit audit, he finalized the budget and made time to submit the budget documents for the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award, which we were awarded. Sorry. Speaking for the finance team and myself, Scott has showed that he is not only a professional, he is also compassionate and caring. He speaks often about his wife and two daughters, and started monthly team meetings to not only discuss workload, projects, et cetera, but also wanted to hear about our lives outside of work and gave us an avenue to become a stronger and closer team. It's unfortunate that some people choose to not like Scott, but having Scott as a boss has been a gift. Where having fun while getting work done is a possibility. With Scott as our boss, we have been supported, given opportunities for continuing education as it relates to finance, and he continues to set us up for success as a team and as a city. I thank you for your time. That is all I have.
Thank you, Katie, appreciate it. We sit up here and oftentimes, we don't, I don't engage. And a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of meetings ago, I did with Mr. Perez. And I shouldn't have done that in a council session. And so, Mr. Perez, I apologize for that, at that meeting. There are things that get brought up as it pertains to performance issues or to staff issues that we don't or cannot talk about. That's, that's not, we're just, we're unable to. Okay? It's just not, it's not fair to those employees. That's not fair to the employees to have those things talked about in open session here. Now, Ms. Reyes came and made her case, and rightly so, and we followed up on that and took care of that and had that looked into her comments. In terms of staff and not having a place to go, as they say, we have, we have a city attorney on staff that they can call and follow up with, who works for the council. There is that, that opportunity to do that, you know? And my experience with M., our attorney, Mr. M. is not, has been, she passes those things along, as she needs to, to us, to have those conversations. There are things that go on, again, I reiterate, where the stories are coming from or the information that you are gathering. Unfortunately, I, we, are in the unfortunate situation where we can't necessarily defend our position on what's necessarily said here, because we cannot. So I understand the frustration. I understand that many are upset. But again, not but, but and, there's more to it than what is out there. And I'll just leave it at that. Emily, did you have a comment? No? Okay. All right. And we're going to move on in our agenda this evening. Thank you to everybody that made comments, I appreciate it. Next is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the May 7th, 2025, city council regular meeting minutes, approval of the modified noise variance for JE Dunn Construction, and approval of the new retail off-permise OLCC license for Canby Grocery Outlet at 891 Southeast 1st Avenue. I believe that is-
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes of the May 7th, 2025, city council regular meeting minutes, the modified noise ordinance, variance, sorry, for the JE Dunn Construction, and the approval of the new retail off-permisance OLCC license for Canby Grocery Outlet at 891 Southeast 1st Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, just as a, for public, for those who didn't read the packet, and I believe just, it should be noted that that noise variance is for, it's just an extension of one that's already in place for, over at the construction over on Walnut Street, correct?
That is correct.
So it's not for anything else in the city, so it's something that's already there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they're just modifying the timeframe.
I just want to make sure that we're not just glossing over-
I appreciate you clarifying that, thank you.
And for the inquiry minds that want to know, July 24th is when you can go to Grocery Outlet.
Motion has been made by Council President Hensley and second by Councilor Maldonado to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the May 7th, 2025 city council meeting, modified noise variance for JE Dunn Construction, and approval of the retail off-permise OLCC license for Canby Grocery, which apparently opens on what, Tracy, July what?
July 24th.
July 24th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 6-0. Next on the agenda, we're moving into ordinances and resolutions. First is ordinance number 1647, an ordinance adopting findings to support an exemption from the formal selection process for a contract for sledge hauling services, declaring such exemption and authorizing direct award of a contract to Herd Farms, second reading. Monica, you tried to rehash that with us?
All right, sure. This is the contract to haul sledge, just like you described there. My name's Monica, I'm with the wastewater treatment plant, sorry about that. Good evening. So this is to direct award this contract to Herd Farms, which we have worked with them for the last 13-plus years. Each time we go out to bid, they're the only bidder. So to, in order to save money and to be more streamlined, we are coming to you to ask for the authority to go forward with a five-year contract. However, each year, we would come back to the budget committee and to you on the cost of that. So that would still get approved, but we would have a five-year contract that would be more seamless and would take less staff time and less money to advertise for that and go through that process every year. That's what we're asking.
Is there any questions, follow-up questions for Monica at all?
Actually, a follow-up question for Emily. In my lobby work, I discovered Senate Bill 956, in which Monica had written a couple of letters of testimony in support of the Senate bill that would give Herd Farms a $10 million grant for expansion of infrastructure. Emily did get back to me that she didn't find that there was an ethics violation there or any sole, sole source procurement process issue. But I'm wondering if you found anything more about the authority of representing the city on lobbying like that? I'm just curious. For the public record, I'd like to have your answers so that the rest of my colleagues know what's going on.
Certainly, yeah. So, good flag, no ethics concerns, no issue with the sole source procurement process in light of this letter. The only thing that we need to talk about administratively is to put into policy how the city goes about taking advocacy positions, which we are talking about.
Okay. And so we're gonna, are we gonna then, before we bring the policies and procedures to the council, are we gonna have another subcommittee meeting to work on language? Are you just gonna bring us some language surrounding that, or?
Yeah, so when we talked yesterday, you had suggested adding advocacy policy to the rules revision we're doing for council's rules. And that's a good idea. I haven't gotten any further on that from there. But if the subcommittee wants to talk about reconvening so that we can look at adding that particular rule to the group of rules we currently have, then I think that's a very appropriate way to do it.
Okay. Thank you. I just felt like it was kind of important information. And I noticed that I, you didn't copy everyone, so I just wanted to make sure that all my colleagues knew all the information that was out there. I get that it's not ethically illegal or anything, but I think I'm gonna refrain from my, an eye vote on this just because I think it doesn't pass the smell test for me.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, mayor. Are there other companies that do this work?
No.
So it's a sole source, they're the only ones that do it?
For the last 13 years, we have advertised, and they're the only company that does this.
Okay, thank you.
They have been our sole bidder and sole go-to for that long.
Oh, yeah, they've done it every year.
The Public Works Director and I went down there to visit the site and met the legislature down there and verbally supported, and were down there together when they asked us to write that letter. So that's how that rolled out.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, Emily, if I were to stay with my eye vote, this doesn't, it just looks like favoritism. And that's why I'm kind of like, eh. So can you give us your opinion on whether or not we're in the public eye, looking like we're favoring one company over another? I get that they're the only ones that provide it, but it's just, I don't know. I just, when I saw that, it just kind of bugged me.
Yeah, I don't-
I want to feel good about my vote.
I see what you're saying, and I appreciate the concern. I don't have a legal standard to apply to the public eye, so I hope the information the public's hearing tonight reassures the public that there's absolutely nothing wrong with the procurement process we're using. So favoritism in the sole source procurement process is not an issue here because we have zero other bidders, apparently, historically for the past 13 years.
Okay.
So if I understand it right, we can, we can favor them or we can not favor them, but we still have to use them because there's no-
Pretty much. Yeah, I'll stay with-
We can find somewhere else to put the sledge, I don't know.
Going outside of the state would be a lot more-
I'm sure, okay. My vote will stand, I just wanted to-
Even if we don't favor them, we still have to use them.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Counselor Patton?
I just want to clarify, has it been 16 years that we have been using them, or has it been longer than that?
It's been over 13 years. That's as far as I could find-
Over 13 years?
Yeah, the files, I went through all the files to see how far back, that's all I could find.
And how long have you been an employee of the city?
Just over a year.
Okay. Yeah, if we've been doing business with them for that long, I can't, I am comfortable with moving forward with this and not having to show favoritism towards this company.
Thank you, Counselor.
I will apologize for my phone. For some reason, it has come into this mode where if I touch the screen anywhere, it makes me laugh. So I apologize for any interruptions that I have done up to this point.
Well, we've appreciated the sideshow.
I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions for Monica or staff? No? Is there someone who wants to make a motion? Will you put on your microphone, please?
I move to adopt ordinance 1647, ordinance adopting findings to support an exemption from the formal selection process for a contract for sledge hauling services, declaring such exemption and authorizing direct award of a contract to Herd Farms Incorporated.
Motion has been made by Counselor Waterman, second by Counselor Maldonado to adopt or approve ordinance number 1647, an ordinance adopting findings to support an extension from the formal selection process for a contract for sledge hauling services, declaring such exemption and authorizing direct award of a contract to Herd Farms Incorporated. Roll call vote.
Counselor Commissioner, or Counselor Patton?
Aye.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Sterns?
Aye.
Counselor Waterman?
Aye.
And Counselor, Council President Hensley?
Aye.
Well, that motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Monica, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a request that should there be other competitors that appear on the system, and you still remember that, if it happens like a long time from now, that we be informed so that, you know? Just so we know that.
Absolutely.
We're taking them because they're the only option, but that should change.
It is less expensive than landfill, so that's another option. That's not really a great option.
And if you'd like, we can get together for coffee and I can tell you about the sledge dryer.
The dryer nightmare.
All right.
Looking forward to talking about sledge.
Yes. Next item for B is resolution number 1434, a resolution amending Policy 5, revenue constraints and fund balance and other consideration fund balance. Ms. Stein?
So, mayor and council, you may recall that on May 21st, you all agreed to amend the finance policy related to the calculation percent of unrestricted fund balance from 30, 30 to 40% down to 20 to 25%. And it was pointed out that that wasn't adopted by resolution, and so it had been originally. And this is, this resolution is formally making that change.
All right. Any questions for staff, comments? Do you have a question?
I do. The current, the current resolution is pretty vague, other than just saying 30, you know, the percentage. And if you go below the percentage that we need to plan, et cetera. But I'm curious, what do we consider, what is the definition? Like, what is the trigger that would, the council would actually use to actually activate these funds? Because I think if, for the citizens, we're really interested in knowing about like where park maintenance fees and stuff go like that, I think it'd be really good for the citizens to know the $2.5 million that are set aside as their tax money. How would we use that and what would it be used for? There should be some guidance or policy there. Instead of just on a whim, we decide we're going to use it. Anybody have any? I'm just, I'm kind of, and maybe this is a work, not saying we're not going to vote for this, but some additional information or refinement later about like how or why we would use it might be good for the citizens to know what-
Like what would trigger us going-
Right.
Below that, or having it come to the council to decide to-
Right. And if it came to the council, what decision, what would we, how, how would we take that information to determine whether it would be used or not? Like, what's our policy or guideline on that?
That would, that's a work session where the conversation, for sure.
Yeah. I think it'd be good to have a work session on that. But my, my interpretation of this resolution would be, this is our instruction to the budget officer when budgets are being made, to make budgets with the 20 to 25%. And any overriding of that would have to come from council. We're going to have a good enough reason to do it, and we can probably imagine a million of them. But we'd say that to be a case-by-case exception, not as a general rule. And so I think the city budget officer needs direction on how to plan for the reserves. Now, whether it should be 20, 19, 21, 24, or 18 and a half, or whatever the number is, I think another work session could be doing that there. The 20% is kind of an arbitrary number, but any number is really arbitrary. But if we have a, want to have a good reason for it, I think that we could have a work session sometime when we're bored.
There's a budget process, and then there's also, you know, we say emergency too, well, that's not during the budget process, so in the middle of the year, what would we construe as an emergency that we would actually take action to utilize that money if we wanted to?
Catastrophic again.
Yeah.
Catastrophic, a recession.
Exactly, but, so I think, but I think it would be good to at least have some guidance on that, because without guidance, then it could be whatever we feel it is at a certain time, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patton?
I would agree, I didn't really quite think of this, but I agree with Paul, I think one of the, one of the states, some of the statements that were made about dipping into the reserve that was, is that the past councils had worked very hard to build up this reserve, and so that's why it must be guarded, but we don't know necessarily what those past councils thought was a good spend for that reserve, and so I think memorializing what this council thinks are triggers for that makes total sense, so that way future councils can say, oh, this is why that money is here, and if they choose to add more guardrails or take away guardrails, that's their prerogative, but at least it is, it is providing some sort of information for the future. Unfortunately, I think there are a lot of things that this, the city does that was created years ago, and no one knows why the heck we do these things, and so like memorializing some of that into the process makes total sense. I am for getting this on the books tonight, and do, not, not like holding off on this vote, but actually like memorializing this as a thing moving forward, and then working on starting to fix, starting to put some, some language in there and to put some guardrails on this.
All right, any other comments or questions? Is there a motion then?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 1434, Resolution Amending Policy 5, Revenue Constraints and Fund Balance, Other Considerations, oh, sorry, yeah, and repealing in part Resolution 1307.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Council President Hensley, seconded by Counselor Sterns, to adopt Resolution Number 1434, a resolution amending Policy 5, Revenue Constraints and Fund Balance, Other Considerations, Fund Balance, and repealing in part Resolution 1307. Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Counselor Patton? Counselor, Counselor Davis?
I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Counselor Patton?
He's having phone issues. Raise your hand if it's an aye. He's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry, were you waiting for me?
Y- yes, sir.
Aye?
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
I'm so sorry, I'm a hot mess tonight.
Okay, moving into old business, street maintenance fee CPI adjustment?
So, Mayor and Council, the question simply for the council is, would the council like to add a CPI adjustment to the current street maintenance fee, this would be the current fee, as an interim measure at this time? So, the council, there's two items that are going to be on the master fee resolution, one is the increase in the business license from $50 to $100, and that extra 50 will go into the street fund, and then the other question is, is there interest in putting a CPI into the master fee schedule right now, and at least getting that piece adopted before the council finishes its deliberations and the task force finishes its deliberations on what amount it wants to recommend?
So, we, we do have some deliverables to that task force, how does this decision play into those deliverables and their, their recommendation process?
Well, I think the, the list of questions that were asked are still out there to be asked, to be answered. The question is, because we are functioning, because we are approving on June 18th the master fee schedule, the question that I had for the council was, is there interest in putting a CPI onto that fee schedule now, and then coming back with the rest of the work?
I have a question.
And I could go either way, I just wanna make sure that we have the direction for this year's master fee schedule.
It looks like there's two things that you're putting up on there, one is the attaching a CPI increase onto the, onto, onto the street maintenance fee, and the other one is doubling the business license.
That's correct.
Are we considering both of them today, right now, or we're considering one or the other?
No, the, yeah, the question that I have is the CPI, I think it's pretty clear from the task force that there was interest in increasing the business license fee to $100.
Okay.
So that is going to go onto the master fee schedule that you'll see on June 18th, that's automatic.
Okay, and so...
And the extra $50 increment will go to the street fund as opposed to the general fund.
Okay, and if I wanted to oppose that, I would do that...
You would do that then?
The next meeting.
Right.
So I can go rewrite the fees if I want to?
Correct.
Okay. I was gonna say, it's a 100% increase.
Yep.
It's, it's, the other question is, are we creating a policy to always attach these fees to the CPI increase, or is this just for next year's purposes, and then we'll forget about it next year and keep it at 514?
Well, once it gets on the fee schedule and it's, it's identified as a CPI, it will, unless the council intentionally repeals that next year, for example, then yes, it would be on there, so it's kind of starting that process of adopting not only the fee, whatever the fee might be, but increasing it by the CPI.
Okay.
That's the new piece for the street maintenance fee. That's already done for the park maintenance fee, the question is, is there interest in doing it for the street maintenance fee as well?
Okay, I think that there's a, I have an interest in that, just to answer the question, yes, but the, also, I think you should consider throwing business license and other things onto a CPI increase, because if there's no CPI increase on any fee, it turns into declining revenue source, and if that's the will of the council to have a declining revenue source, we just might as well cut the fee off, or make it as a, as an official action instead of a curve of a sneaky, a sneaky reduction, we should be, you know, voting for increase or decrease as a council, and not have it just decreased by default like it's has been for the last, what, 20 years, 18 years?
Counselor President Hensley?
Thank you. I know there's been a lot of conversation about attaching the CPI, I just don't see any wisdom in doing it now and then having the task force finish their work and then raising the fee a second time on the citizens, they could be easier to explain to the citizens, this is the raise, and from here going forward, we'll have a CPI increase each year, I think doing two increases, we're already ticking off the citizens that it is, so let's not, let's not do this twice to them.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patton?
Yeah, so this CPI indexing should have been done a decade ago, just like it was done with the, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought I heard somebody. So, yeah, no, this should have been done decades, a decade ago, when it was done for, like, when it was set, when the park maintenance fee was set up. One of the concerns that has been raised of the task force is that with the calculation, not knowing the accuracy of the calculation, who is getting charged the right amount or not, would increasing it by 10, 20, 30, 100 percent then all of a sudden be generating too much revenue? A 3% increase is not going to have any sway in that. I have been requesting that the council do this since I've been on the Budget Committee years ago, so I think, I think it's high time that this be done. But as far as the business licenses, you know, I could go either way on those, but I think, I don't see a problem with that either, because that is, that is something that definitively the task force had said would be a good idea, and so I would be comfortable moving forward with that as, along with the CPI index.
Okay.
Are we needing an official motion, consensus, what are we doing with this piece?
Counselor Waterman?
Yeah. I think if, if we're not even having a conversation with the street maintenance fee increase or task force, I think the CPI would be something we would have to discuss and probably approve anyway, just to make sure that it's for the whole reason they have the cost go up and just like the park maintenance fee. So, sorry, I'm a little, the, increasing the business license fee and then take half of it and putting it into another fund, like the streets fund, seems a little off to me, because the business license, like if you go into the, into the, into the city ordinances, it says that the business license fee is to be used for administrative purposes for managing that program of the licensing of the businesses, so if we start taking a business license, and then we're gonna take a chunk off, and we're gonna use it for street maintenance fee, and then, then next thing you know, we're taking a chunk off, or we're using it for another piece over here, now we have this sort of funds coming from different things that they, doesn't seem like they were really intended to be for, so I'm not so sure, honestly, about the whole increasing the business license fee just to now attach it to a, a street maintenance, because $50 is, is about $4 a month, and we're worried about whether we're gonna increase something $4 a month or $10 a month, and you're already increasing it $4 a month just by increasing the business fee, so, anyway, that's, that's my question and concern about the business fee part of this, or business license fee.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Did we get a recommendation from the task force or the committee on this?
On part of it, yes.
Pardon me?
The business license fee, yes. The CPI, they're talking about that, but they want to finish their project first and find out what the level would be, make sure everybody's paying what they're supposed to be, but the business license was already part of the recommendation.
Okay. I, my recommendation would be to wait on this until after we've got the total recommendation from the committee.
I would agree.
Counselor Maldonado?
What would be, what would be the problem with holding off and waiting and seeing?
Again, it was just a matter of posing the question, because it's been, it's been asked, and so...
I would have to agree, let's, let's see what they come back with.
Mr. Mayor, before...
Yes, sir.
Just to address the issue, the CPI increase thing is correcting a mistake that was done in 2008, and as a policy of not having our revenue sources be indexed to inflation, and the whole reason why we're having this conversation right now is because of that mistake that was made then. Now, we can, if we want to, as a council, propose to increase the fees, if we're gonna increase the fees, and we'll take the recommendations as they come out and increase the fees by that dollar amount that comes up, at the time, and we might decide to have it go into effect the prop, the next year or something to avoid mid-year disruptions, or we can have the increase go a little at a time, say if we wanted $3, we could do a dollar extra per year or something like that to mitigate the impact, but I, I strongly believe that this is a mistake that was made by the city, and that I don't, I wouldn't, I mean, I guess if we have to wait, we have to wait, but it seems like we've been waiting on this for a long time, and we better just fix that mistake, and then later on, when they, when they come the recommendation, then we say, let's, let's, let's increase it, but to, I always believe when there's a mistake made, that you fix it as soon as possible, with whatever way you can, and I view this just as a, as a mistake that the council made when they originally drafted the policy, and the reason why is because they didn't draft it with the intent to say, we want a declining revenue source, we want money now, and we want it less next year, less next year, and less next year. I have a feeling that not understanding the, you know, decreasing value of currency that people often, in my profession, make that mistake, it's not, it's not like I'm judging everybody for making that mistake, it's often, that's often made, but if we continue with a decline revenue source, it's possibility that we never get an agreement on the fee increases, and we still have this mistake that, that's not necessarily apparent right away, but it will be apparent, and we could say right now that there's a lot of funds that were lost based on an error, so I see this as fixing an error, not necessarily making a new policy, just fixing an error in the old policy, but that's, that's my opinion on it, that's why I would, my, I would encourage at least the CPI increase thing to go into effect now, and to wait on it would be confusing two issues, one issue being, should the CPI index be used, and the other issue is, should fees be raised? I think of them as completely two separate issues that are not even just tangentially related to each other, not even the same question, first is, do we want to have a declining revenue stream, and the other one is, is there more money needed? And so I think it was two separate questions with two separate answers.
Okay. Chairwoman Sassy for the task force is here, would you like to come to the table, please? While she does that, I, trying to, so the point being made, like, are we, well, first off, let me back up, so, I don't necessarily think it was a, a mistake at the time, we were what, one of the, Counselor Patton, we were one of the first cities?
The first city.
I think the first city to do a street maintenance fee and gas tax in their city, and so, again, I think it was a matter of we didn't know what we didn't know at the time, and Counselor Patton, I'll give you 30 seconds here in a minute, and so I think there was, again, it's been this learning curve, but yes, it's been a conversation piece that the council's just...
A question, was it discussed at the time that we wanted declining revenue source? If it wasn't discussed...
I don't know.
I'm sure those words weren't used.
Then, then, then basically, well, it was an oversight, I guess mistake, oversight, whatever you wanna call it.
Counselor Patton?
So, so it was an oversight, so here's, here's the situation, as the, as the mayor said, this was, this was a fairly new thing, and to be honest with you, when the original task force was meeting to hatch us out over several years, tying this to CPI was never, never crossed our minds, and when it came to council for adoption, there was a couple of other recommendations that were included in the recommendation from the task force, and the council specifically denied part of them. They said, no, we really don't think these other things are necessary, but we agree with creating the fee, and this should be the amount and all that stuff, and, and it was, it was put into place. And then, several years later, when it was decided to do the park maintenance fee, all of a sudden, people were like, oh, hey, you know, this, if we do this, it really should be tied to CPI, because the, as you said, the, the street maintenance fee is declining every year because of the cost of goods and materials, and so, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, we didn't, the, the original task force did not say, oh, you know, $5 should be good for the, you know, forever, ultimately, this was sent to council, and this, this, we are the policymakers, and so it is our, it is within our authority to, to make these adjustments, and so I think, based on attending the various meetings over the, the last year or so, something that has been expressed by most of the members, if not all of the members of the task force, is that this really should be tied to the CPI. I, I think doing it in increments is smart, as far as saying, you know, this year we're going to tie this... going to tie this to CPI, so that way people get used to a, a small increase. And then if there is a decision from the task force to do another increase, then, then that's fine. I think waiting to do it all at once is just adding a much higher burden. Because again, one of the things that's gonna happen is every year that this CPI is not added, we lose several cents off of this $5. And so, you know, now it's worth $3 and some odd cents, maybe 2, 2.95, and then it's gonna become 2, you know, 75 and, and eventually, you know, it's, it's worth, it's not, it's not doing anything. So, so, yeah. So that, that's sort of what happened back in the Wayback Machine.
Thank you, Councilor Patton. Uh, I mean, back in the napkin math, if, on the $5, if we do the CPI right now, I think we were talking the other day, it was 2.81?
Oh, yes, 2.
2.81 is the Engineering News Index that's applied to the park maintenance fee as well.
So that's like 12 cents?
14.
14 cents.
Is it 14?
Our materials say.
Okay. So, um, yes, so Chairwoman Sassy.
Let me talk on the business license real quick.
Yes.
If I'm, if I stand corrected, the business license has not been increased in 25 years?
If not longer.
If not longer. That $50 was gonna go into the fund to help street maintenance. We looked at several avenues of funding, police tickets, I mean, you know, we were in the meetings, we looked at all the different avenues. That was the most clear-cut one that we could come up with right now to help bring revenue into the city. Our opinion is that we should have another meeting as soon as possible to talk about the street maintenance fee and 14 cents does nothing for us right now. I think if we're gonna increase it, we need to go with one of the examples that we decided on in our meeting and do it at one time. I, I do not see, and we recommend 14 cents. And then coming back again with another fee. So if you want it done at once, then let us, let us talk about it and bring a recommendation to you like we would like to do.
Our ultimate goal is basically to, um, increase the fee and then, like after that, every year increase it by the CPI index. So say if we raise it from $5 to $10, then the following year it would be raised according to the CPI index.
Yeah.
And continue to do so. But we need to have a jump in that, in our current fee because we're so far behind in what we need for our city.
Okay. Councilor Maldonado.
Council President Hensley.
And then Councilor Davis.
You know, Councilor Patton had stated earlier that, you know, we, we have the option to go ahead with this.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I agree with that, but just because we have the option, this is why the task force is here, we need to let them do their job.
Thank you.
We have stated this time and time again, to let people do their job. Let them do their job. Let them come back to us with their recommendations and then we can make an informed decision.
Okay. Council President Hensley?
I second what he says, but I, my question's actually for Emily. The street maintenance task, um, the street maintenance fee was put into place, that program was put into place by ordinance. So can we just arbitrarily decide to change the CPI and put it on the, on the regi, on the fee schedule? Or do we need to change that by ordinance, since we established it by ordinance?
Depends on what the ordinance says. So if the ordinance says we're establishing this fee and council can change it by resolution, then you can do it by resolution. But if it doesn't delegate the amount changing to resolution and keeps it all within the ordinance itself, then you gotta go through your ordinance adoption process. And I can, I can check that language for you if you'd like.
So ordinance 1262.
Yeah, and that would need to be done as well, to modify the ordinance.
Okay. Councilor Davis.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. How quickly do you think your committee could get together and come up with a recommendation?
Well, I think we could, depends on availability of, um, council and mayor, your timeframes. Also, I think we could get something together in a week or two-
Okay.
-if we can. Um, you know, I mean, we, we were educated pretty well by, by what's going on and the streets falling apart and they're paving every other year because the money's not there. Um, and we've been after this since September, October. And this, if we can get on this, this brings revenue to the city. And so here we are, you know, we need to get revenue in the city, obviously, by the shortfall that's happened. So the sooner we can get this done and a recommendation to you, the better.
Okay, thank you.
I lean, I know-
Mr. Mayor?
Just one second, Councilor Patton.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so again, back to the deliverables for the task force. I know a lot of our pause on that was trying to get through what, you know, a tough budget piece. Um, do, will we be able to, because I look, if I could speak, we are looking at having the, the finance team start to go through that.
Right.
Um, those accounts and things like that. Do we have a timeframe or game plan when that can start and-
It's still late summer. We need to get through the adoption of the budget.
Okay.
So the planning department has done its work, um, but it needs to get over, and it has been handed off to the finance department.
Right, so I-
But budget is the priority.
No, I understa-, yeah, so we're not, we're within, you know, a couple of weeks of having that, we'll say, put to bed. But we're still looking like probably in August timeframe to have those all gone through and whatnot.
It'll probably be sooner than that, but I'm reluctant to make a promise.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but we should have another task force meeting-
Sooner, rather.
-to just kind of go through that stuff. Councilor Patton?
Yeah, so something I could just talk on ahead, I've been thinking about this. At the task meeting of the, um, task force, one of its members had passed away and the task force had opted to replace that with another member of the community. Um, I think it would probably be good for the order. So the, the task force makeup was set forth by the council, um, back when this whole thing started. And technically, I don't think boards and stuff can like unilaterally decide who they will or will not have on their, on their boards. So it might also be good just for the council to sort of memorialize that, you know, having, adding this person to the, to the, um, to the act like official and sort of bless it if, 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 if a man-
So I, I hear what you're saying and, 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 you know, I, right now, we're just wanting to get this, this hurdle crossed, so I'm gonna put a pin in that for a separate, separate-
And I, I was just throwing it out there because I keep forgetting to bring it up.
Okay.
And then it bombed into my head and so now it's-
Okay. Well, we, it is noted and put, and a pin has been put in it. Okay. Yes, Councilor Davis?
So I had the opportunity to sit at the last meeting and I know that the committee had volunteered to actually help go through the utility bills to get some of this work accomplished. And, um, they were waiting for a response back from our city administrator as to them being able to sit down to get this, uh, move forward. So-
So balls in my court on that one. Sorry, Councilor Davis. Um, I appreciate the help that you're willing to put forward this. This is where I get to be the lawyer and say I have serious liability concerns with that. Um, granted, I have not seen exactly the type of system that you've been, maybe be working with and the kind of information you have. So when, I think it's probably Scott who has those numbers, when Scott has time out of the budget process, I'm happy to take a second look at that just to confirm my, my fears. But that's my position on, on that ask right now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, I appreciate that, but we hadn't heard anything.
Yeah, we hadn't gotten an answer.
Yeah, and that was, Eileen emailed me and that was, the ball was in my court and I dropped that one. So the delay is my fault for that.
Okay.
So Emily, can I ask a question? This is, this was a list of, I believe, 1,100 businesses in Camby? And that's the list that we were looking at to see who is paying currently and who is not. So that's on the business side, not the residential.
Not residential.
Yeah.
Okay, just businesses and you'd be looking at names and dollar amounts over the years. Okay, that's helpful for me to know. I can follow up with that.
Yeah, that was it. No, it wasn't the residential side.
Good to know. Thank you.
Okay. So again, I'm, this, I think the, well, I'm not sure, it seems, the council seems to be split here on the, the aspect of the, um, adding the, the street maintenance fee CPI to the, the fee sheet. I don't have a consensus field or so. Just leave it, leave it be until we get back from the task force or?
Well, if the task force is gonna come back with something in the next couple of weeks or even a month, I'm, I'm okay with waiting. My fear is always, um, and no offense to you guys directly, but sometimes in my experience, committees are where good ideas go to die, um, in my experience a lot. And so my, my urgency is based on the idea is, is if it's not gonna happen, maybe we get something happen rather than nothing. Um, but if it's gonna come back within a couple of weeks or a month, I don't think there's a next, it'll make much of a difference. But my question is, if we have to modify it via ordinance, then that's gonna take a little while anyway because we have the first reading and second reading. And then if we did were to modify it, I don't know, say September 15th, can we have the fee going into effect mid-year or is the master fee schedule sort of the master fee schedule?
No, it's a flexible document. It can be modified at any time.
Okay, so that's not gonna be an issue?
Right.
As far as, um-
Right.
As far as, oh, wait, so, so I not, I'm not in a hurry to do it, you know, today, but I just don't wanna see the results, results get delayed forever.
It won't.
Yeah.
We're shakers and movers. [laughing]
No, to your, to your, uh, I lost my train of thought, but, okay, thank you. I'll leave it at that. So I guess just head nod, we're gonna, of those here, wait.
Yeah.
No, no, wait.
Let, let the task force do their job.
For the, the business fee, does that, since there are, there is a maintenance fee ordinance or in, et cetera, does there, does that have to be changed too in order to take money from the business license to put into the street maintenance fee?
Is a business license established by ordinance, is that your question? That's a good question.
Yeah, either, or either one. Because if you're gonna make a change to the street maintenance fee, you probably still have to make note that you're actually taking that so that five years from later, we're like, why is this money going here? Well, there's no document saying why it's going there. So-
Yeah, that's gonna depend on what the business license fee is committed to. Is it ordinance or resolution?
Right.
So we can look in that and-
Okay.
-figure out the process.
I know we're the lowest for business license around. I've checked with other cities.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not concerned about raising it, just are we using it?
Are we raising it in the correct-
Right.
-way and can we do what we're asked, what we're theorizing that we can do?
Right.
Got it.
Yeah, that's my concern as well. I'm not necessarily advocating for not raising the fee, but I'm just questioning the effect of doubling it right away. It maybe need to be, better be phased off in increments for, for increasing the fee. And the reason why is comes from two things. One's budgeting, um, and two, there's a lot of businesses in Camby that don't have a business license. I'll just say that right away. I know that, yeah, personal knowledge.
What?
I do their taxes. Um, I know they don't have a business license and to discourage them from getting a license by increasing the fee, it's like, okay, I don't want, sure I don't wanna pay 50, oh, let's take it to 100. That doesn't encourage them any to get a business license. But I, um, so, so there's some, maybe some policy decisions that could be used to help convince people that don't have a license to get a license. And, yeah. But then a license, the big cost for getting a license isn't actually the license fee, it's the transit tax fee. And that's, um, and I've heard people, in fact, I have a friend of mine who doesn't do any business in Camby, but his headquarters is in Camby, and all of a sudden, you know, ask for, you know, a huge amount of money just because they went and made, according to him, made the mistake of getting this Camby business license. And so that's one of the things, and I explained to him that he doesn't have to allocate further to, um, you know, jurisdictions, but just remember that there may be other consequences besides just getting money.
Yes.
Quickly, it does look like chapter 5.04 of our Code of Ordnances talks about business licenses. It looks like it might possibly have been established by ordinance, so might need to kick the can on both of these items until we have ordinances before us.
5.04.220 says, "The annual license fees and penalties for delinquency required by this chapter shall be set forth by resolution."
220.
That's great language.
Aha.
It can be done by resolution.
220, okay, so we can do that, so we could do that piece.
So business license can be done by resolution.
Yes.
The other aspect is by ordinance. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you both.
So do we need a, uh, we need a formal resolution though, we can't just do it tonight?
Yeah, no, we cannot.
Perfect.
Thank you both.
But it will be, it will be added then to the master fee resolution. That will be the resolution that enacts it.
And I'm sorry, Teresa, but before you scuttle away.
Scatter away.
How long feasibly do you really need to-
Pardon?
How long feasibly do you really need to come back with that information?
With, with the committee?
Like which information are you asking about?
For the CPI and the business license.
Well, as soon as we can get a meeting put together.
Soon as we can get a meeting.
Okay.
Once they get the information from administration.
My question is, who would be the point person for that?
Uh, that would probably be Councilor Patton and Council President Hensley. I was, I'm purely just an ad hoc, supposed to be a fly on the wall.
Supposed to be a fly on the wall. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I actually, when this, when this task force was created, I was assigned as the liaison to the task force, so.
Me both.
So Councilor Patton would be-
So I'll re-
No, actually-
We're not gonna fight about it. Jesus Christ.
Yeah. Got it. Thank you, Teresa. All right. All right, moving into new business, uh, next Wednesday is an open Wednesday. We do have the, uh, master fee piece coming up at the following meeting. I would like to schedule a work session for this group to review and have some dialogue around the, uh, fee, uh, schedule and be able to go through that as a group and answer any questions or discuss potential changes to that fee sheet, so, um, because it, it can be a lengthy conversation in light of the June meeting to be generally pretty long because there's a, we have the Urban Renewal Agency budget to approve, the city budget to approve, there's a whole slew of resolutions that we have to approve that night and so.
So you're waiting at June 11? That's what you said?
Uh, whatever next Wednesday's date is.
Okay.
So I was thinking, uh, start at 6 o'clock.
Is that the 10th?
11.
That'd be the 11th.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
Does 6 work for you and not 6:30?
Yes, head nods approving, sounds good.
We may-
That's what I mean.
Can we push it just a touch later?
6:30?
I have doctor's appointments.
You tell me, 6:30, 7?
Let's do 6:30.
Okay.
I think that should give me enough time.
Okay. 6:30 it is.
Okay, got it.
Bring your own food. Yeah, Emily. All right.
I bring food to share, is that against the rules?
No, it is not against the rules anymore. That to share, no, please. If we provide like as a group, yes. Um, mayor's business, a couple of things, but I've got, we'll have Mr., Mr. Perman, if you wanna come up and address the, uh, we're discussing a potential work session regarding Third Court and I know that this has been a, a passion project for a number of years.
Yeah, I brought it up back in 2013 is when I, I went back to my, I was like, okay, the group of business owners and manufacturer owners and people around Redwood Village who really, and still are tired of people parking their parking spots because they want access to the logging road. I proposed the city taking over the utility road of Third Court because of three different sectors that are using the road. sectors that are using the road. All your mains trucks, utility trucks, ambulance, fire trucks and different vehicles of the city use it all the time. We have people that use it to get to the logging road by car and park, both in our parking spots and on the logging, on the, on Third Court. And then, of course, the patience that we have in businesses of that village and it's growing, we got more being built now. And so I brought it up in 2013. The council wasn't quite ready, so we've just been kind of waiting and keeping people out of our parking as we can. But as the South Side continues to grow, we get more traffic on Third Court for more than just our businesses. And that's why I thought, I think it's a good time to hopefully get to a work session and talk about the details and talk about what I think is the very common sense addition to have a private parking spot for the citizens that want to get to the logging road on the South Side of town. And so that's really, we already have that private parking spot area on the North off our territorial, but we don't have anything on the South Side. And that's what I wanted to discuss. And if you have any questions that we were here to answer any of those questions that you may have on that decision tonight, to maybe have a work session and really spend some time.
So, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. So I bring it up to you all because there's been a couple of inquiries about doing said work session. And so I'm looking to you all if that's your desire to do that.
Yes.
Okay.
I feel we, we need to get this taken care of once and for all, and we owe him an answer. You know, he's come here many times in front of us, and we keep kicking the can down the road, and we need to resolve it.
Well, to, to add some context to it, it's not that we've not given Mr. Perman an answer to his inquiry. There have been answers and suggestions at the time when you own the properties and things like that, so.
I have not been part of that discussion. Or prior councils may have.
That's why I'm asking the question, sir. Is there any other thoughts?
Well, I'm, I sort of think it'd be a good idea to have a work session on it just to talk about it. Several questions come up, you know, if they're not going to park there for the logging road, where will they park? I did, does the school district kick you out if you park there? At the school district, I know I haven't tried leaving my car there at Baker Prairie, but.
Give me one second, sir.
And so, and the thing about people is you can't really control them as much as you want them to. His options would be to close the lot down completely, put a gate on it or something like that, tow away cars, which I'm sure would, if we started, people getting towed away, I'm sure we'll have a lot more people at the front to talk to us about it. But I think a work session, obviously that doesn't commit us to anything, having a work session about it.
All right.
I don't have a problem with it. It sounds like after 13 years, we could at least sit down and try to get something figured out.
Okay.
Councilor Patton?
Anyone else? I agree. Let's get it on the schedule.
All right.
Yeah, no, I have thoughts and I'm happy to pass this out.
So it looks like that we will get this added into the calendar to have this conversation. Eileen and I will work on a date. I would say information that you all want to know, start formulating those questions so that staff can start working on getting those answered. Part of that, I think, is probably a history lesson on this street and from pre-build to now would probably be the biggest piece. And then whatever questions you all have from there for city staff to start working on for a date to be determined. Yes, Councilor Mulvaney?
I'm sorry, before anybody else has any, you had something else to say?
Well, he had asked about maybe somewhere else to park. If you look and you can do some of your own driving around, there is no other option between 13th, where the neighborhood is, all the way up to Third Court. It's all industrial, and then it's the school, and then it's the neighborhood. That's what, you know, when I first developed this, we didn't discuss it 20 years ago, that just ultimately this road is the only way to get to logging road by car on the South Side of town. You can't get there by the railroad tracks on the North Side of town. And so that's why this ended up being the place to go for citizens that are driving to get to the logging road so they can walk it and go on. We didn't discuss that during 2006 when we discussed the development of the development. And so ultimately, when the school said, we don't want people parking in our parking lot to get access to a city park, that's pretty much what they said. So that's against the school rules for anybody to be parking in their parking. Yeah, people still, sure, but we're trying to give a better option for the citizens on the South Side of town who want to drive. I have moms with baby carriages, and I've got pics of older people that drive there all the time because it's an easy access by car from the cul-de-sac to get to the logging road. And so if we were able to have the city take over the road and use one of the available lots that are still left, there's one or two still left that we could use for a city parking lot, then we'd resolve the problem with some really good common sense because it's really an easy access, a safe access, and people can start using an actual parking lot instead of our parking lots for our patients and other businesses around us that have had parking lots. And that's what some of the other people came tonight, if you want to speak to them, but I'm sure they'd be willing to come to the work session to tell you the years of dealing with people that are using their personal parking spot and lots to get access to logging road. So I just felt it was fair. The North has their own parking, the South is not. And it appears to me that Third Court is the logical step because really what if it's the only way to have still a lot designated for public parking?
So, thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Perman.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting.
I have other people here too, but they're just wanting, they'll be at their work session itself.
Okay.
Because they really have some interest in making this all.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. I'll continue on other items on the mayor business side of things. I want to say congratulations to Cambie High School softball team for their incredible softball season. I know that they recently lost in the semifinals, but it was a great run and they had a great season. Want to say good luck to Cambie High School baseball team. They will be playing Saturday for the state championship for, against, just drew a blank on who they're playing. Is anybody here knew who they play? Summit, thank you. And I guess we've lost to them four years in a row, so it'll be a big game. So it's at Volcano Stadium if you're interested in going down and supporting the high school team. Graduation for the class of 2025 is this Friday.
I know.
So congratulations.
And we won't get rained on, thank goodness.
I know, it'll just be blazing hot.
Yes, it's true. It's okay.
So congratulations to the class of 2025. Also, congratulations to our new chamber director, Chatrice Crank. It sounds like she's officially in her role and hitting the ground running, so we look forward to working with her coming up. Tomorrow, from 5 to 7 with First Thursday, is the Touch a Truck event. I believe the trucks and stuff will be lining up right out here for, for the kids to come climb in, play with the bulldozer. I think they get to operate the bulldozer, is that part of the fund?
I think they get to.
Play with the sirens and all that?
Oh, I'm totally there then.
Insurance doesn't cover that? Okay.
They might get to, to, you know, tout the horn or something like that.
Oh, yeah, I remember the third graders.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year we had it and it was a huge turnout. So, yeah, we bring it all into downtown. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, and this year there is also going to be a mini cruise in at Cutsford's. So it will be a little bit of a tight squeeze, but it will be, there will be a lot going on.
Good.
Yeah.
And we know in mini car show by the Cutsford standards is.
Not very many.
Only 250 cars versus the 700, so no, it's great. Summer is underway in Cambie. Eileen, the Knightsbridge closure, do we know?
June 16.
How far behind they are and when that's going to happen?
We don't know how far be.
June 16.
Okay. June 16.
It'll be four to six months is last I heard.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go, about four months.
And we have this information on our website and social media and all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've shared it to Cambie Now a couple of times.
Okay, Councilor Patton?
Yeah, for some reason, after this has been mentioned a couple of times, I went on to ODOT's website and it, I thought it looked like they have pushed it back for.
June 16th was last email, Lisa.
I heard one, I emailed them today and the project manager came back today and said it's the 16th. They're updating the website and sending out.
The project manager emailed back that they're updating the website and sending out the emails on Monday for the notifications.
So it is June 16th?
The 16th, yeah.
They had previously.
Okay, it's crazy.
They had previously hoped for a May 15 construction start date, and then that got pushed to June 16th. And the project manager, who I'm sure, same person Stan, right? Super responsive, they've provided the city with the detour map and updated detour map, and we have that on our website. It directs right to their website, so as soon as it's updated there, ours will be updated as well.
Great, thank you. We have budget committee openings on our budget committee that just ended. We have two open positions. We have had a couple of applications come in, so Mr. Budget Chair, we should connect on those interviews so we can get them learned up.
Learned up.
Okay. I did send, yes, we'll connect. That's okay, okay. My last piece, so just hot off the press from the state legislature regarding transportation pieces that came out, I think, earlier today. So there's been the introduction of what they're calling the Smart Framework, Safe, Modern, Affordable, Reliable Transportation for a Thriving Oregon. And the idea of it is basically they're, they broke it down into the different transportation investments that they want to make at the state legislature, and then what they're hoping will be the revenue mechanism to pay for those things. So for example, invest in safe, safer, healthier streets. They want to fully fund safer ops to school. Launch a great streets program, which I have not been able to find any information on what that entails yet. Launch a jurisdictional transfer program, so much like we've done with Clackamas County, the state is looking to do that with cities for their state highways to turn them over to cities. Preserve existing transportation systems, so towards maintenance of existing roads and bridges, ongoing operation needs for ODOT. And so they're looking at to do that, gradually raising the gas tax by 10 cents per bienniums every two years through 2032 and indexing it to inflation. Increase vehicle registration fees by 50%, increase title fees, increase to weight mile tax for trucks and cargo, and phased in establishment of a rogue user charge for light vehicles and medium duty vehicles. Other aspects that they're looking at, incremental raise the, incrementally raise the employee payroll tax to 0.5% by 2032. And then establishing a new smart fund for use towards community paths, electrification initiatives, passenger rail, wildlife crossings. And to do that, they're looking to add a progressive 2% sales tax on new vehicles and 1% on used vehicles, over $10,000, a bicycle privilege tax, and a vehicle privilege fee increases 0.3%. So as liaison or actually on a number of transportation committees, I just wanted to keep you on the loop. There's no word yet of tolling, but are you, you know, so how many days left in the session?
Too many.
There you go. So that's, so that's all that I have on mayor's business. Councilor Patton, we'll start with you on council comments and liaison reports. Or not.
You're muted.
I'll come back. Councilor Waterman?
I have nothing. There is no, there's no bike and head meeting this month again. We should resume next month. And we have not had a library meeting since last month yet.
Okay. Please, do you have a library board meeting coming up?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, please thank the library board members for attending our budget meeting and their emails regarding the library budget. Councilor Sterns?
Nothing with my liaison reports, it's too early in the month for that. Just a few comments about some of the things that we talked about today. And one comment, I've been getting a lot of emails last couple of days about from citizens opposing a 200% increase in the Uber tax, but I don't think we have an Uber tax. So there's, perhaps there's some confusion out there that people think that we haven't Uber tax. So I just want to say that publicly that I don't believe we have one, couldn't find one. So there's a comment I wanted to make about the park maintenance fee. I think that we as a council need to adopt a resolution to create a separate fund for the expenses of the park maintenance fee and then a policy on how those, that those expenses are expended. Having written, actually in a previous iteration, I was a software programmer, I had to design and write accounting software. It's one of the things that I did. You can't get a report for something unless you have the right data input. I think right now we're lacking the correct data inputs on the expenditures to tie it directly to that fund. So my solution is what I think that needs to happen is we need to instruct the finance people to create a separate fund, to have a policy that we as a council adopt by whatever resolution or ordinance or whatever, we need to do it that says the street or the park maintenance fee can be used for X, Y, and Z. And then at that point, we can go back a year later, pull a report, and then we can see if someone wants to audit it or whatever, see if that's where the funds were sent. So that way, the parks maintenance fee can be accounted for the way that citizens want it accounted for. And personally, I prefer it to be accounted for anyway, because if we're going to attach a fee to somebody, we, I think we need to make sure that we have, know what that fee is going for. So that's my, I guess, a request that I have, that that be put in place. I understand the frustration when you don't have the data in there already, you're not going to get it out no matter what software report you use. And if you have the data in there, you can even use QuickBooks and get it out if you, if you needed to.
Counselor, I want to make sure I understand, and certainly you can have a work session. Are you suggesting that just, that this would be a new fund that the, that the park maintenance fee would go into?
It could be a part of the general fund. I'm not saying that it has to be outside the general fund, but at least internally that we can account for, we bought, I mean, there's, there are different ways it could work. I can imagine lots of different ways it could work, but basically say something to the effect that we need to spend money. And so if we do need to spend money on something related to parks, that we say, is there money available in the street maintenance fund? And then if there, and is it part of what is allowed by the street maintenance fund? And then we account that, yes, we spent this amount on this particular categories. I think that's going to, I could think of different ways, and they can, and I defer to the finance director to figure out the best way of doing it. I can imagine, it's not my job, but if it were my job, I could think of several different possible ways of doing it in a specific way because I do accounting for a living, so I do know that. But I think something that we can tie down, that we can pull a report. I know what's needed, though, is going to be on the data input, the expense input, there's going to be a code for which GL account that it comes out of, and then we have to have some policy. And it's maybe going to be a little more work for somebody, but yeah, we all have to work, I guess. And so that's, so I understand that. So I think that's, that's going to be needed and it'll, and it's something that we need to, we need, as a city, need to know and say, we're charging everybody this fee every month, and what's that used for? Someday we might want to raise it. We got to say, well, where is it going to go? Or someday we might say, hey, we don't need anymore. But the, but we need to have that baseline so we can count back.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't talking about creating a new fund, but you were still talking about revenue that goes into the general fund that's dedicated for parks.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think that we need to do one outside the general fund. It doesn't have to be that restricted, but, you know, internally, we have tons of general, you know. But, you know, internally, we have tons of general, you know, general fund, funds, you know, that we can use and another debt. It's going to make that piece of paper a little bit longer, but I think it'll, I think that'll, it's something doable and something I think a lot of people want. So the issue with the street maintenance fees was the issue of CPI, which I talked about already. There's a question of is there any additional need? But I think a third thing that I've become aware of, or I believe it's needed, is a better defining on non-residential, how that is determined. Because the last time there was a work session on that, basically nobody knew how to calculate a non-residential street maintenance fee. And so I think that would be something that we look for, for revising to make it so simple or so anybody can look and see what kind of thing they have. And the other thing, just stuff we talked about tonight, is I wonder if there was maybe an oversight in the planning committee or something when we're issuing permits for people and we don't have the power necessary to, to, to run the buildings that were issuing permits and saying it's okay to do it. And I don't know, a lot of times these things are segregated and it's not my department or his department or whatever. But I think it's something that looking as a city policy to maybe have that as a checklist before issuing new large project buildings, is there going to be power? Because if there's not going to be power, then that's, that's okay. They can go somewhere else to build. But I would, as a builder, I think I would like to know that first before I started building.
Like to address that issue. So the city is not a purview or obviously of electricity and also for water. That relies on Canby Public Utility. Canby Public Utility is engaged at every level with us through the development review process. That starts at pre-application process, and we also do land use review, and they have comments that they provide, those become conditions of approval. The unfortunate situation here, and this has a big impact on the city, and so I'm not trying to dismiss that at all, but it's a regulatory piece that, that Canby Public Utility solely has. It's not something the city has. In fact, legally, we cannot deny a project based on lack of electricity. So that's another element here that plays into this. And we are also under permit streamlining provisions in the state of Oregon as well. So we have to process things through that process. Now, the unfortunate thing is this came up way late in the game. Every single one of the projects that are having issues now had all been through the full land use review process. None of them were aware of this issue. Canby Public Utility was not aware of this issue until it became apparent through correspondence that they had with Portland General Electric in April this year that said essentially, this is a pretty big deal. There were some initial rumblings about transmission issues, but nothing that said this is actually a pretty significant problem. But it's not our, we're not the gatekeeper here in terms of the electricity issue with the city. It's not our utility and it's not a service that we regulate. And so I just want to, for the record, be very clear about that, that, you know, it's not something we're withholding. In fact, if we asked Canby Public Utility, we said, we need to actually be messaging this very clearly. You all are the lead on this, but you're engaged at every point in this process with us. And they actually wrote up a one-page memo that we're handing out to all applicants so they understand the seriousness of this issue until it's resolved.
Yeah, I'm not blaming it on the city that this happened. What I'm just saying is that whenever there's a, a problem or crisis, it often gives us an opportunity to do things, you know, a little better next time. And so that's, I'm not really saying that anybody did something terribly wrong, but I think it's an oversight. And I know, having talked with other people who are developers and one we actually went and talked to, that one of the big challenges for developing here in Canby is coordination between the three development entities, the fire department, the, the utility, and the city. And when they don't all work together, it can create lots of costs. And so I just thought, to just mention that it might be an opportunity to look through, to reach out to the other agencies and maybe have some sort of more streamlined process that would make it, so, hey, you're coming to do something in Canby? Well, look, here's everybody you talked to and let's, we all sit around the table and work together instead of saying, well, what is this?
I mean, there is, there is collaboration and coordination. I would agree, you know, everything can be improved. I'm not saying, you know, it can't go without improvement. There is significant coordination that happens. Development is not easy. It just is not easy. I mean, that's, that's part of the process. It comes back to our codes and creating a standard of equality for the city and the development of the city, which is an expectation around the code. At the same time, I mean, we do really work strongly with the other utilities and Canby Utility is one of those. This kind of came out of nowhere, which really essentially Portland General Electric should have been a little bit more on the front end side of that, looking at like growth and those kinds of things, back to the mayor's comments. I mean, the state of Oregon is all about continuation of growth. The land use laws in this state are fairly aggressive in terms of growth and development. It's fairly permissive if you can meet clear and objective standards. And the intention, even in state law, going to the growth plan that we're doing right now, is you have to look at 20 years of continuous growth. This obviously has a huge impact on the city, and so I want to recognize that. And, and we're working with Canby Utility. They have, they have consultants that they're working with that are trying to coordinate on this issue as well, including Bonneville Power, who actually is the keeper of like this whole situation. All the power comes from them, then they're connected with Portland General Electric. So I'm hopeful for, you know, a positive outcome here. It does have a huge impact on the city. To your point about coordination, that's always something we're looking to improve there. But I just wanted to be clear because a lot of times things get pointed to, to planning, and it's not really something that we're directly the sole source of that information.
No, I understand. I just look for, look for ways of improvement.
Thank you, Don, appreciate it.
Okay, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to recognize Steve Thurlman in the back of the room. Steve is with the Fire Board from Canby Fire. Had the opportunity to work for Steve for many years, and I just wanted to thank him for coming to the meeting tonight. So thanks, Steve. Huh? Do you want to come up and say anything, Steve?
It's a great word for the best. We work together well, so thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. And again, I'm looking forward to the work session on the park maintenance fee. The, I wanted to thank the Park and Rec Committee. Don and FCS presented at the Park and Rec Committee a lot of, some of the information that was presented tonight. But thank you, Don, for taking the time and, and having them come out and present that information to the Park and Rec Committee and to get their input as we move forward with that process. We also talked about moving the sign at the park. What's the name of that park, Barry? Timber Park. Request came in from the Neighborhood Association, and so Public Works is working with the Neighborhood Association to actually move the sign over because that happens to be placed in the only area that kids can really play T-ball or whatever. And so Public Works is, Spencer's working with that group to actually get that sign The, one thing on the Park and Rec is, and I guess I have a question for either Emily or the city administrator, but on a records request, a records request was sent in by a citizen, and they were told what the charge would be was astronomical to receive that information. And it was information that I know our Park and Rec Chair has been trying to get that information in regards to what has been charged to the Park and Rec or to the park maintenance fee. So if a city councillor requests that information, can I get that information without having to pay a public records request?
It's a good question. So on the public records request side, the law does give the city the ability to charge fees for producing those records, fees that are meant to reflect the actual costs of staff time and materials required to reproduce the records. The law does give citizens who request public records the opportunity to request a fee waiver, which is evaluated for a public interest type standard by the, the city in this case, the responding party. So I understand there was a public records requister who sought this kind of information. So if, if we need to look into a fee waiver process, then, then that door is still open. As for your question about councillors requesting this kind of info, this is an area where it sounds like there is significant staff time required to respond to this request. So if a councillor made that request, my advice to Eileen or to Maya when working with the councillor on that request is to see what we can do to maybe narrow the request or approach it from a different angle such that city operations aren't impacted in that, in that kind of way. So, and that's actually what we do with the requesters themselves, is if, you know, they make a request that's quite substantial and would cost a lot of money, then my recommendation to the city is to always go back to the requister and see what exactly they're after. Maybe they don't know exactly how to ask for it, so the way they ask for it kind of produced absurd results in terms of cost. And see what we can do to narrow the scope in a way that's, gets the requister what they want at a price point perhaps that is tolerable.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think that it's important that the chair of the committees, if they want this information, that every effort should be made to get them this information because the committee needs that information to make decisions. And, and it's based upon what I've heard tonight, it's that our software program can't be modified to be able to put the charges to exactly where the park maintenance fee is going to. And I would expect that to happen.
I just want to be clear on the, I see what you're saying for the, the chairs. And if council gave them the task to do something, then that's also, perhaps they should have the information that they need to do the task the council has given them. To be clear though, on the public records requesting side, so the law doesn't require the city to create records in order to respond to requests for information? So if someone asks for information?
Well, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that.
Got it.
You know, now it's at my level, and I'm going to request that information should be done and a date to receive that information.
Understood. I just want to be clear on the record, it's kind of a finicky law based on which side you approach it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And then as we were discussing the budget, this year's budget, it came up of moving the parks position over to wastewater management. And, you know, I, I'm going to be voting against the budget just simply on that item because of the fact that we are getting farther and farther behind in park maintenance. And it's very discouraging to hear that they've moved a park maintenance position to wastewater, who's already been hiring positions this last year, you know? And they don't need any more positions in wastewater management. As a matter of fact, I believe I'm going to be pushing to have a contract and, and there's a company that actually does contracting for wastewater management. And I'm going to want to see that possibly in next year's budget, because that could be a budget savings. So I'm going to want to see that information. And then out on Highway 99, I would like to, an explanation from the city on what happened on Highway 99. I understand the planters had to be removed by the railroad. The railroad requested that. And so Robin, basically, his company went out and removed those planters. And then last couple of weeks, somebody went in there and ripped out all the roses. Okay? And the railroad's doing this and ODOT's doing this. And apparently, I, through Christine Drazen's office and talking with Christine Drazen's administrative assistant, she's been saying that somewhere, someone in the city had been told about this in regards to the actual ripping out of all the roses. And that it could have been stopped with proper communications. Well, that's years, that's several years of work, of volunteer work, and a lot of money put into roses to be ripped out. And now the question is, is who's going to maintain that right away? You know? So that's something that Public Works needs to be working with ODOT and/or the railroad to try to figure out, you know? Because that's a shame that all that work for years and years for beautification down there, and now we're going to be looking at weeds. You know, so. And I appreciate Christine Drazen's office looking into that for us. On the positive side, Rotary presented numerous scholarships at the last Friday Rotary Luncheon. Congratulations to all those high school recipients. That was really cool to see and to hear where their destinations are going, where they're going to. I was taken back by how many are going to George Fox. Yeah, and there were even a couple ducks in there too, so.
That's hard for you being from Wazoo to send ducks.
There were no cougars, I'm sorry. You know? And also, if you didn't notice, I wanted to thank K&amp;E Construction who did the work out on Highway 99. Point S Tire had been requesting that they put the center turn lane back in out there, and it's done.
Good.
And so they said they, they would do it, and they did it. So I just wanted to recognize K&amp;E Construction for following up on what they said that they would do. Because Ben Malar has said that there's been several rear end accidents out there because of the fact of no center turn lane. And so it's, it's back out there. So thank you to K&amp;E. That's all I have there.
Great, thank you. Councilor President Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any liaison assignments completed yet as it's early in the month. I am very happy that graduation is going to be a sunny day, so congratulations to the graduates. Also, with my work with the Suicide Prevention Task Force and with the Prevention Coalition, I like to always draw attention to mental health issues. And I just wanted to say that Men's Mental Health Month is observed annually in June. During this time, various organizations, mental health advocates, and communities come together to raise awareness about mental health challenges that men face, break the stigma surrounding men's mental health issues, and promote open discussion encouraging men to seek help. I'd just like to say, seeking help is a show of strength, not weakness. So that's my little statement on that. And in light of the comments that have come in tonight and the previous meeting and the meeting before that, and our emails, I just want to say I'm tired of us taking a milquetoast approach to active, to action that we need to be taking, action we should have taken months ago. We keep kicking the can down the road. I've struggled to get meetings on the schedule. And so we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago that we put a pause on because it was 11:30 at night. And I just want to say I want to get a meeting on the schedule to address these issues sooner rather than later. That's all I have.
First, I'll start. I second Councilor President Hensley's request for getting the meeting. I do not have any liaison reports at this time.
Councilor Patton, are you with us?
Yes, I'm sorry. My phone is, is like, the world is against me at the moment. I apologize. So I do not have anything to report at this time, other than apparently the Clackamas City's dinner meeting that was held at the historic Westland City Hall the other day was smashing success. And the Landfall Landing Heritage Area Coalition learned quite a bit about how many people they can actually put into those rooms. So, yeah. So that's pretty much it for me.
Great, thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, city administrator business and staff reports.
So council, I prepared for you a final status report on your fiscal year '24, '26 Canby City Council goals. Out of the interest of time, I don't know if you have any questions on those or if you would like me to go through anything. Mostly, they are items- on those, or if you would like me to go through anything. Mostly, they are items that have been carried over into fiscal year '25-'26, so we will get started on those, or continue to work on those. I did prepare, in terms of your item, to conduct an assessment of current and future city staffing needs for the next three years. I, you know, I identified, or we identified, that we needed three police officers, one code enforcement staff, three Public Works FTEs, fleet and procurement, one FTE, and I would add to that one FTE for a public information officer. So, quite a, quite a, 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 quite a need for, for future staffing, and for, and, and part of the reason that we need to identify funding options for those, for those positions. So, the other thing I wanted to comment on was that there was an interest in conducting a community survey on customer service and city service levels. The, that was not renewed, the funding for that was not renewed in '25-'26 due to the need to, you know, reduce the budget. But we will look for other ways to continue to assess the community's interest in city services through the outreach in the UGB expansion process, and then gauging the desired city service levels when we get into the, the budget exercise this next year. So, that's what I really wanted to comment on. Other than that, if you have any questions, I would take those. So.
Great. Thank you. Next opportunity for citizen input. Anybody want to address the council?
Mayor, there was one other item that I wanted to comment on. It wasn't on the agenda, but I wanted to add it to the list, and that was, so earlier today, I sent you an update on the PIER project, the Planning Infrastructure and Economic Revitalization Grant.
Yes.
That was submitted on behalf of the Canby Community Partners to Clackamas County. Canby applied for a $530,000 grant. And those involved in putting this request together included the city of Canby, the Canby Center, Canby Fire District, Clackamas County Fairgrounds, and the Canby Adult Center. So, the grant contains three elements, $50,000 for non-emergency food items that would be stored in a cache at Clackamas Fairgrounds, $420,000 for generators at Canby Center, Canby Adult Center, and an external lithium battery at Clackamas County Fairgrounds, and then additional funding for maintenance of that battery. So, four proposals were submitted from the, from throughout the county, and it turns out that Canby scored the highest of the four proposals. And I just thought that was just worth recommending, or worth mentioning. And so Jamie and I are working on a, an announcement that gets that out there. So, I just want to say congratulations to the Canby community for receiving that.
So now it goes on from the county level to the state level?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So we've been invited to participate in that next round. So, yeah.
And how long is that process?
It'll be probably another year or so.
Okay. The wheels of government. Okay. So that's good news. Congratulations. Okay. Action review. Ms. Emily?
Thank you. As a council, you have approved the consent agenda, agenda items. You have adopted ordinance 1647. You have adopted resolution 1434. You have decided to schedule a meeting with the Street Maintenance Task Force within the near future to discuss ACPI adjustment to the street maintenance fee. You have decided to review the master fee resolution in a work session at 6:30 before the regular meeting on June 18th, and you have decided to schedule a work session regarding the parking conditions at Third Court at a later date.
That master fee resolution discussion would be on the June 11th.
11th, okay.
Yeah. At 6:30.
Okay. Other than that, I think we're good.
Ms. Sassi, thank you for pinch hitting tonight for our recorded meeting.
Thanks for your patience.
No.
You did good.
Done great. Before I take a motion adjourn, well, I do need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660 parent two, parent H, to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed.
Motion has been made by Counselor President Hensley, and second by Counselor Davis, to move to, sorry, go into executive session under ORS 192.660 parent two, parent H, to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Executive sessions are closed to the public. Representatives of the news media and designated staff may attend executive sessions. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No executive session may be held for the purpose of taking final action or making any final adjustment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone?
Aye.
Okay. Canby, good night. We are in executive session.